Call the meeting to order, Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals. Meeting for October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one. We'll begin with a call to order and roll call. Echo. Amy Wall, are you here?
I am.
Jim McCain.
Here.
Chip Tarbell. John Pride.
Here.
Tom Lucy.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
And Mike Feely.
Here.
All right. Let's proceed with the legal notice, which I'm sharing on screen with Amy.
Yep. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions under the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to wish to do so are invited to click the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two. Meeting ID nine, two, two, one, seven, 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 four, three, six, six, passcode seven, three, five, three, five, one. Please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One, continued hearings, two, twenty-two dash thirteen, and I apologize in advance if I butcher these names. Aditya Bondal, Puna Devankar, Anil Sein, Debashiri Mukherjee. Application for a variance under Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-six of the requirements of Article six of the of table two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to, in addition to be constructed onto the existing dwellings, the property is shown as map seventeen lot parcels one, two, six, seven, one, and one, two, six, seven, two of the assessors map and is located at two Sugar Hill Lane, three, twenty-two dash fourteen, twenty-two dash fifteen, Nelly Street nominee trust. Application for a special permit under Article six, section one ninety dash thirty-two G two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to convert a two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling, application for a variance under Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-six of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. Seeking a variance from the requirements of section one ninety dash thirty-two G two related to the conversion of a two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling. The property is shown as map zero, eight lot parcels, one, six, three of the assessors map and is located at six Nelly Street. For twenty-two dash sixteen, twenty-two dash seventeen, twenty-two dash eighteen, twenty-two dash nineteen, the savings bank. Application for a special permit under Article seven, section one ninety dash thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow reductions in the requirements and or standards for off-street parking and loading related to a proposed addition onto the existing bank building. The property is shown as map twelve lot parcel seventy-six A, eighty-seven A, and eighty-seven of the assessors map and is located at three forty-seven Main Street, three fifty-seven Main Street, and three Chestnut Street. Application for determination and or finding with respect to a continuation and an extension of non-conforming uses under Article nine, section one five, one fifty B of the Wakefield zoning bylaw proposing to construct in addition onto an existing bank building. The property is shown as map twelve lot parcel seventy-six A, eighty-seven A, and eighty-seven of the assessors map and is located at three forty-seven Main Street, three fifty-seven Main Street, and three Chestnut Street. Application for a special permit under Article seven, section one ninety dash thirty-seven A of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow off-street parking areas to be provided on another lot in the same ownership as the principal use related to a proposed addition onto an existing bank building. The property is shown as map twelve and seventeen lot parcels, seventy-six A, eighty-seven A, eighty-seven, and eighty-nine of the assessors map. It is located at three forty-seven Main Street, three fifty-seven Main Street, three Chestnut Street, and three forty-eight through three fifty Main Street. Application for a special permit under Article six, section one ninety dash thirty-one L of the Wakefield zoning bylaw and site plan approval in conjunction therewith to allow reductions and or increases to the floor area ratio, F A R, maximum building coverage, minimum open area and front yard setback. Oops, sorry. Front yard setback requirement of table two, table of dimensional regulations and Wakefield zoning bylaw related to, in addition, onto an existing bank building. The property is shown as map twelve lot parcel seventy-six A, eighty-seven A, and eighty-seven of the assessors map and is located at three forty-seven Main Street, three fifty-seven Main Street, and three Chestnut Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Okay. We have received on one of our continued hearings, a request from Attorney Brian McGrail to continue that hearing. So we'll take that up first in case anyone is here specifically for that specific hearing. Memo dated today, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, regarding S G D Management Group LLC at ninety-seven to ninety-nine Water Street, Wakefield, Mass., case numbers twenty-one, forty-three, and twenty-one dash forty-four. Requesting that we continue the meeting to October twenty-eighth, the letter says, but I think our next meeting is the twenty-seventh, right? So while we have now resolved our issues with the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department, we have met with Board Member McCain and are still in the process of making adjustments to the design for submittal to the board. So I assume that's just a typographical error for the record, Brian and Gail. We are meeting on the twenty-seventh, right, no, twenty-eight.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. I apologize for that.
No worries.
Yes.
Okay. Do we think we'll be ready by then? I know we continued a month ago to here. We making progress here?
Yeah, so we we had a meeting with with Mr. McCain. We are now in sync with the light department on what our requirements are. We met with Jim last week with our architect, Site Civil, and my client, and came up with some conceptual footprint that we all agreed should be presented to the board. And my clients in the process of drafting those plans, they weren't ready for tonight. So they should be ready for sure within two weeks.
Okay, glad to hear. We just would like to bring this one back and continue to advance it. Okay. So with that, let's entertain a motion to continue this hearing to October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
I move that we continue this October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. All right. So if anyone's here for that application, ninety-seven to ninety-nine Water Street, we will hear that at our next hearing on October twenty-seventh. And then lastly, before we dive in, just sort of a public service announcement, if I will, I assume you can still see my screen. This is posted on the town's website for those who may not sign up for these notifications or have noticed. On October twentieth, there will be a forum between with the Town of Wakefield and the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, M H P, for a forum on the state of housing in Wakefield, as you can read on the screen. Just wanted to inform folks, and if anyone hadn't heard about this, there'll be some information about sort of the trends that we're seeing, not just in Wakefield, but in surrounding towns. Some of the rationale behind it, terminology, some people, again, may or may not fully understand the process and what towns have to go through. And again, this isn't just E B A. Some of it brings in planning board and other boards, depending on the nature of the project. So I will be there representing the Board of Appeals. I believe Matt Lowry will be there representing the Planning Board as chair. Again, the main speakers will be from probably M H P. And Ezra, I think I heard your name mentioned that you may be there as well. So just a public service, if anyone hadn't heard, if you know of anyone else that might be interested in this, learning more about this topic, here's the information on the town's website. There's a Zoom link and a phone number. Okay. So with that. Stop sharing. And we will proceed into our first continued hearing for the evening, twenty-one dash thirty-seven Crescent Commons Development LLC at forty-four, forty-six, and forty-eight Crescent Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, for the record, on behalf of Crescent Commons Development LLC, Attorney Brian McGrail. With me tonight are my two principals, Steve and Joe Bocelli. Also, Peter Sandus and Steve DeFuria, our architectural team is here, along with a new person who is now involved, and that's Jim Emanuel, who we brought on to talk about some landscaping possibilities for the project. That's a suggestion of Jim and Amy through our subcommittee meetings that we should look at that. And they didn't suggest we bring on Jim. We just did because he's so qualified, but they just suggested that we should get a landscape architect involved in hopefully to do that before the hearing tonight, before the full board, which we were able to do. Since since you're the last meeting on this with the full board, we were, I think, charged with going back to the subcommittee to look at dealing with some additional massing adjustments on the fourth floor of the building to try to cut that back. If you might recall, Board Member McCain had some ideas and Peter Sandus and Steve DeFuria, our architects, thought that they could work off of that and perhaps make more changes. We also recognizing that we were either going to have to move units around to do that or potentially lose units. One of the also stated goals of the board was in doing this to try not to lose any parking that existed because the last, the record plan currently before the board has seventy parking spaces. So we went back to the drawing board. We've actually had two meetings with the subcommittee in this regard. I think they were successful. We've been able to reduce the massing, as you will see tonight, when Peter and Steve have the ability to present the plan. I'm sure you'll hear from your subcommittee on this. We've we've reduced the massing up on that fourth floor level. In doing that, what we're proposing is that we would lose two more units. And so that would bring our number down to forty because there was no way to do that if we if we would have had to affect parking if we were going to keep those two units, and that was a goal not to not to do. So 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 this plan reduces it from forty-two to forty, keeps the parking count at seventy. So if this plan were to go forward, in if we were, you know, what we're hoping tonight is that we get the blessing of the board on this plan. And if that's the case, we would we would submit this plan formally as a formal revision and revise our proposal to the board, our application to be for this forty unit plan rather than the current forty-two point unit plan that's before you. But this plan actually accomplishes that. Two things, there have been goals of the board. It further deals with the massing of the building, and it also improves the parking ratios because now we're, as I mentioned, losing two units but not changing the parking. So the parking, if this plan were to go forward, would, again, there would be seventy spaces and the parking requirement is sixty-two or sixty-two point five. So we have seven and a half or eight extra spaces beyond what's required under the zoning bylaw. So I think that this, the possibility of this plan benefits two goals of the board. And we're hoping, we're hoping to get, you know, basically a blessing or a thumbs up on this plan because we would like to go back to the subcommittee if we do and start working on some of the things that would be critical to the board's further input in conditioning of this project, for building materials. You know, landscaping, more details on the landscaping and conditions that we've talked about as far as security systems, intercoms, minimum visitor parking spaces, et cetera. So during our meeting, when we presented this at the first time, Jim and Amy said, gee, you know, I think it would be important to give the board an idea of how you might be able to deal with the landscaping upfront to potentially tear it, which would further address massing concerns. So it'd be helpful to get an landscape architect on board in an effort to kind of give the the board a full scope of the possibilities. And so we did that. So with that said, I'd like to hand it over to Peter and Steve to maybe go through what adjustments you've made to the building, guys. Would you do that, please?
Peter, you unmute? Doesn't look like you're unmute, but. Peter, we can't hear you.
Still, still nothing?
Oh, yes.
Better keep louder more.
This happened the other night, but that you can hear me now. Is that correct?
You just have to talk loud, Peter, real loud.
Yep, no problem. I can lean in as well. I'm gonna, if I can share the screen, I'll bring the drawings up on the screen.
Okay, you should be able to.
Okay. You're seeing this now, the front page of our presentation?
Yes, we are.
Which is a three-D representation of the building set onto the site. I think this is really helpful because it shows that the center of the building has been maintained. The three center portions are a four-story portion, and then to the left and the right of the building, it drops to three-story. We removed, oh, I didn't say thirty-five percent of the fourth floor, and you can see we've pushed some of it back onto the site, onto the rear building. But this model at least shows us that that building is not all flush on on Crescent. It's pushing back and it's breaking down to the right and to the left. In the first floor, we were able to still maintain some community space, a gym and office. Still units, and again, this whole area in the front is parking, and we haven't touched that. The second and third floor, each of fifteen units, similar to what we had presented before. When we come to the fourth floor, you can see the reduction on the left, reduction on the right. And you can see how the center of the building maintains it, four stories, the hall meanders back to two units in the back which are also inset from the edges of the building below and hidden somewhat by the parapet of that building. There's also access here from the fourth floor out onto a common roof deck on the right. On the left would be H V A C area. And then when we start to look at the elevations of the building, you can see the Crescent Street elevation with the center kind of highlighted, the breakdown right and left in this area of Crescent Street back, you know, forty feet from from the street, virtually invisible if you're standing on Crescent. If we look at the left elevation on Crescent Hill, kind of mimicking that same idea where the front building is kept lower at three stories, and then the higher areas are set way back from from the edge of the building. This happens as well on the rear elevation up against our neighbors. This is the area where we pulled the building back for two units here above the three-story section. Same thing on the lower right-hand side. Everything is held back from the edge. Some steady studies of the Crescent Hill elevation, looking at our neighbor, and we're able to determine that the ridge of the neighbor is almost equal with our ridge, if not a little bit higher. So we do not come higher to the neighbor on the left at Crescent Hill, and we do not come any higher to the neighbor on the right at Crescent Street. I know that was a concern, but we work hard to keep all those ridge heights. But I I think the point to stress in this model stresses it is that we really, really took a lot of the massing out of the fourth floor of the building. Brian, I think it would be important to talk about this area because this is where we work on on having the landscaping help bring the building down because the landscaping comes up.
Yeah, so you're you're, I'll take over, Pete, because you're kind of, you're fading. We got, we got, we got it, but I think I can kind of elaborate on that. So through the first subcommittee meeting, and I'm sure you're going to hear from them directly, but Jim and Amy, you know, talked about the topography of this site, how it goes down. It goes down as you go down Crescent Street towards water, which which creates a greater reveal on the foundation on this side of the building as you face it on Crescent Street. And that's where they came up with the idea that it might be helpful to get a landscape architect involved to show the possibilities of tearing this that would really really mask that exposure. So so Jim Emanuel has has gotten involved. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to him. And thank you, Jim, because you really get on this quick. So, you know, there might be some more discussion and changes on his plans. Perhaps, but at least this will give you an idea of his of his thoughts at this point on on how to enhance the building and and really kind of eliminate this issue here. So, Jimmy, you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep. Pete, can you stop sharing and allow Jim to share? Jim, do you want me to bring your plan up, or do you want to do it?
Um, I can bring it up.
Okay. Jim, for the record, would you just identify yourself for the board?
James Emanuel, landscape architect. Okay, can everyone see the landscape plan?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is well, this is the overview of the landscape plan. We can see Crescent Street just orient everyone here. The side street, this is the footprint of the building showing the grade parking and then the lower driveway elevation here. And I'm going to zoom in to this first area of interest that I think everyone's talking about where the topography of Crescent Street is such that it's high in this location and it slopes downhill as we go over here, creating more of a reveal of the foundation of the building in this area. So what we're looking to do with respect to the landscape on that to help the building set into the site effectively is introduce a series of terraces in this to reduce the exposure of the foundation. So this line right here, as I zoom in, you'll see these kind of lines with the curved edge would be wing walls or retaining walls that would come off the front face of the building short of the sidewalk and retain all of this land in this area here. And then a second one that would step up and retain all this land here. Now, we're anticipating that these walls would be about three feet high at their highest location on the back. So standing along the driveway as you enter the lower garage area, this would be three feet below this next elevation. And then as we come through here, there'd be a modest pitch, and then it would be a three-foot step up onto this elevation. We would plant all this with various shrubs. We've got them identified with their keys and the plant list on the planet you have. It's like burnums, some inkberry, a flowering tree, a flowering weeping cherry, and so forth, and some grasses and things here. But the idea is to create level platforms that step up, that create a little bit of structure and organization to the space. As you go up this topography, again, it's low here and it goes uphill here. The grading would be such that the 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 land would slope consistent with the sidewalk, and the walls would come across the building and then turn and merge back into the grade here and merge back into the grade here. As we come across the front of the building, we're about twelve to eighteen inches below the the floor elevation across the front. And then we switch to just as kind of a simple planting of ornamental grasses across the front as this would be fairly level. So this is that section of the building that read as kind of a unit, and that would be fairly level with this wall, holding it up as a as kind of a single terrace and then stepping down and then stepping down again. Additional components of the landscape plan include shrubs along the foundation near the drive and across the front, some greenery across the side of the road here at the driveway, at the entrance to the to the garage or the exit to the garage, should should say. And some additional plantings around the perimeter, including a few trees around the back and a few shrubs around the subsurface infiltration system. I'm not sure if I can bring this up. Can people see that elevation now, or do I need to stop sharing? Do you still see the same one, or do you see a different one?
We do.
Elevation.
Okay, so you see the elevation. So this is just to give you a sense of what was before, which was this black line showing the exposed foundation increasingly exposed, and then this red, just giving you a sense of how we're creating more of a platform and it's consistent elevation across with the retaining wall here. And then the step down again, three feet, and then a step down again to the driveway area, and then these scribbles kind of indicate shrubbery in that location that will soften this line and and give, I think, just a more consistent and softer street frontage along on Crescent Street. I'll go back to the site plan so you can see that where that occurs here and then here, and how that lifts that grade up so that there's less building foundation exposed, and that kind of gives the gives the appearance of the building being more integrated and settled into the land. Again, we have, we've got a few other perimeter plantings and some trees where we can get them in through various other portions of the site. So I think that was the main component of this. There are any other things that you know, questions, I'd be happy to answer those as well, too.
So that that, you know, I want to thank the subcommittee, you know, these meetings we've had, there's a lot of work that goes on, a lot of back and forth. You know, as you can see, my client is investing into into trying to come up with a plan that resolves the issues that have been raised, and he's he's not shy about spending the money and the time to do that and working hard. So I commend them too, because they they are, they've 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 continued to work hard as our whole team has to try to come up with a plan that that accomplishes everything that we're trying to do. So I'm sure you might want to hear from your subcommittee members, Mr. Chair, or?
We do. That's where I was going next. So I want to give Jim, Amy, and Ezra opportunity to just add to what's been presented thus far, and then we can proceed from there.
Well, let me, let me take the first shot at this. So we've had at least eight meetings, basically, over time to address comments made both publicly and within the committee here. And in each one of these meetings, we've made progressive progress as we looked at this. And as I noted in the first few meetings, basically, I was looking for this building to step more into the neighborhood. And over time, basically, it has stepped more into neighborhood and taken a lot of that fourth floor off. We've also addressed in our discussions, basically, T A C comments, to the point where T A C doesn't have any issues at this at this time with this project. The the landscape, basically, as just shown, helps eliminate a lot of that exposed foundation by sloping it both towards the street and up the hill, not unlike other places along the street, but addressed in in an appropriate way. We've further suggested that maybe there needs to be some street trees. In fact, there is a street tree there in rather poor shape. There are also power lines on both sides, so the hope we can find some way basically of dealing with street trees as well. Like I say, there are a few on the street, but it would be nice to provide for some more. We also had slight, an early conversation, which I won't get into much now, about where the transformer goes, because the last thing we need to do is put a transformer out and all that planting at this time. So I feel very comfortable personally with where this is. It gives us excess parking. The strategy for guest parking, basically, as previous noted, basically, is coming not off from Crescent Hill, but is coming off from Crescent Street. So there's no confusion for guest parking, whether they're going to park on the hillside or whatever, they're going to park in the building where it's where there is a lot of parking, basically, for them. It's sheltered. It has direct access to the elevator to visit for visitors and the like. So I think this is a very good scheme. I think we've reached a point where this board basically needs to decide whether they're satisfied with where this is or make further comments as to what adjustments might be made. But I think we've made the big moves at this point over these eight meetings. So it's it's more, it's more detail-oriented, I think, from here on. Leave it to Amy to speak now.
Thanks. Yep. So I I still struggle with the building. I we've gotten to a really good spot. I wish it was in a different location. I was, you know, we have to listen to the experts, and as Jim said, T A C and everybody else, there was no, they don't think that there's going to be any issues. So it made me feel comfortable moving it forward to you guys. I still am not, I I like what they did. I think they've done a great job. I just, for me, where it's at is just my hardest part, but I felt comfortable enough bringing it forward to hear what you guys had to say and see what you think.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Ezra, would you like to add anything?
I'm not really anything to add here other than just, you know, sort of echo what what I think the subcommittee said about, you know, this. you know, this arriving at the place where it's at and it's sort of, they've, they've done their work. They brought it back to you for a, you know, a, some sort of a blessing. And then if you're okay with this, I think the, the process that Attorney McGreal stressed, sketch that would make sense, you know, to ask for now a clean set of plans with this sort of almost, not as a new application, but as a new submittal. This is the, the best way to do it is to not have to add a ton of conditions, but to have them show everything on the plan exactly as you want it. And then, you know, then it's very clear, for example, the stuff that Jim just mentioned about said the transformer. If that's in the wrong place in that set of plans, you ask him to move it, but you don't want to have to guess where it is or condition where it is. And I would hope that that set of plans also reflected all the stuff that's been talked about. And there's some stuff, this process goes pretty far back. You talk about, for example, the, the question about a crosswalk maybe being added, or, you know, I think Jim's point about street trees, showing all of that so that the board can really know what they're approving if we get to that point. But, but I think, I think prior to that, we really need to get into what Amy and Jim were just suggesting.
Okay, thank you. Any board members want to make a comment or ask a question at this point?
Yeah, I guess I'll ask a question, but first, thanks to Jim and Amy for all your hard work. I, I do think this has come a long way. And while I, I appreciate what you know, the applicant has done, I guess I'm with Amy a little bit. I'm still struggling a little bit with the site and with the massing at this site. Jim and Amy, is it your feeling that this is the, the most we can push the, the applicant on in terms of massing and unit size?
From my perspective, yes. I mean, understand this is a 40B. There's only so far we can go here. And the alternative to this is a disaster. So this is, in, in this building, at least in the way the design has progressed, never mind the mass for a minute, is in keeping basically with the nature of the town in something that's more like the term of the century, which there are a few buildings in town that are like, like this or have been like this in the past. So the character, I think, is appropriate as opposed to something like what we've approved on Salem Street in the past. That's Salem Street. This is downtown on the edge. So for me, I don't, I don't see, I see details now beyond, beyond where we are basically, more, more discussion on materials, colors, details to make sure we get that turn of the century character into this building.
That's helpful because it is, we, we can't overplay our hand to your point. We only can push so far. So but thank you again. I, I do think it, it is so much better than what was initially filed. So that gives me a lot of comfort at least.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to see it move forward at this from what's been presented by the subcommittee and all their hard work.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, no one else, I'll, I'll weigh in too. Yeah. Although I may semi-agree with Amy that I wish it was somewhere else. I mean, I think we've answered the questions we need to be answered for 40B. So I'm comfortable with it moving forward from this point, too.
Thanks, Greg. Yep. And I too express concerns or reservations as other board members did throughout this process and appreciate the, the collective work of the, of the team, the subcommittee and the applicant and our subcommittee members to, to try to improve and find some compromise and common ground. You know, I'm, I'm getting to that place as well that I, I just, I wish there was more we could do. I understand our hands are somewhat tied. I do like that it's headed in, in this direction and it's, you know, again, with some additional landscaping and other things that we can try to make it fit as best we can. We've heard from all the other town boards, you know, they've expressed concerns, but nothing that would you know, I think make me believe that it just will be an unsafe project or a project that will just completely alter the landscape of that, of that, that area and that neighborhood. I know the neighbors don't feel that way and, you know, I hope they understand if they're on again tonight, they understand the predicament that this board has placed with these kinds of applications. And we've done about as much as we can do up to this point. Again, there's still more details. We're not done. But that, you know, I'm getting to that place where I think we just have to move forward. I, we've, I think we've exhausted what we can expect from that subcommittee and getting this sort of massing any, any better than what we see tonight. So I'll leave it at that. I will also offer that somewhere in the last transition where somebody stopped sharing, I lost the window of the Zoom call. So I may have to drop and rejoin. It's a good thing I made Amy the co-host because I have no, no control over this window and the Zoom meeting anymore. So I'm going to drop and rejoin momentarily. I would ask Amy, just stay tuned and I'll be right back. And does anyone else that has a comment or question, please proceed?
Like we're all waiting for the lights to go out now.
I don't know what happened. I've never seen this happen. I actually tried closing the Zoom window and it's.
Can I add you back as a co-host?
I, if I, if I can actually quit Zoom, I'm trying to quit Zoom and it won't let me do that. I may have to like kill the task. So sorry, I apologize, everyone. Let's see how quickly I can do this. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I'm back. I don't know what happened, but thankfully, I think the key is, and we have to remember this going forward, whoever is chair, make a sign a co-host, because if I, if I left and not done that, Amy, the recording would have stopped. And, you know, then it ends up being a a mess, I think, at the end when they have to post the videos. So anyway, I appreciate everyone's patience. So Brian, back to you. Sorry for the delay. Was there other material or updates you were going to present this evening?
No, so, you know, it, it, it seems that we have the, the blessing of the board and, and if that is the case, then what we will do, what I would suggest, and, and I would kind of lean on Ezra, that we will go back to the subcommittee and now we will work on the fine aspects of this as far as materials, colors, fine tune the landscaping, transform the locations, put the things on the plan in detail that now we're committed to and would accept as conditions, because that was, that's part of the deal on this. And in, in try to fine tune this through the subcommittee to represent to the board to make sure that we're addressing everything that has been promised and is reflected on the plans.
Okay. And where were we with TAC?
TAC is done. They issued their final memo, which I think you, you already have.
Oh, was it presented at the last? No, it wasn't at the last meeting. You weren't here.
I don't think we got a last memo, but if they could definitely be sure that's something in the file, that'd be great.
Yeah, you did. Back in September 8th, I think. Okay. Okay, yeah, we do have that letter to the TAC from Matt Keely. Okay. But I didn't know if there were any follow-ups back to your team or any final memorandum from the TAC. Okay.
No, they're, they're, I mean, you can correspond with them. My, my take is it done. They issued their final memo and they, and they said that I thought there. We just see here, hold on.
Because my notes on 9/8 on September 8th said next meeting, October 13th, TAC and Design. So there must have been something said at that meeting. Maybe we had just gotten the letter and we said.
I think you just got it, but it has been submitted.
Okay.
So, you know, there. Conclusion of Matt Keely's memo is, you know, based on DHB's review of the materials submitted throughout the review of the project and discussion at the TAC meetings, the H, the, the HB feels that the current proposal substantially reduces the impacts of the surrounding neighborhood compared to the original plan. The HB recommends that the additional commitments that we've talked about made by the proponent and recommendations summarized in the memorandum should be incorporated into the project moving forward. That dealt with the commitment on the visitor parking and it dealt with the crosswalk potential that Ezra had talked about.
Electronic access and
Yes.
Some other aspects in this memo. Okay.
Yeah, they, they also were requested, and this would be as reflected, that they requested a, a contributor, a financial contribution of $25,000 to study any potential improvements that might, they might want to make to intersections in the future. And, and my client, you know, if this moves forward through the board is, is amenable to that condition.
Okay. All right, sounds good. No, I'm glad I mentioned it just again to make sure we're closed. Did anyone else on the board have any comments or questions or?
Yeah, I do. With this next meeting that it seems like is coming forward is I don't want to just discuss materials and the like and colors, but also detail and sections basically. So the character of what we've been presented basically and elevations basically follow through the, to the details or the sections basically similar to what we've asked for in the past on other projects. So we, we make sure we get that character within the final approved documentation, if, if in fact it goes that way.
Okay.
If I could just, just in addition to that, you know, the, the, the new submission of the plans and the material Jim just mentioned, Brian, is it safe to assume you'd be submitting a new request of wa, for waivers or an updated version of that, just so the board knows what's, where this complies and where it doesn't?
Yeah, it could be a reduction. So.
I would expect mostly, but if you updated that, it would, it would help with the paperwork to make it clear where, you know, how, where this now complies and where it doesn't.
That's fine.
And then also can, can we rely on you to be in touch with the, with the subsidizing agency as well, just to make sure they're aware of any changes? Usually they're fine, but it's, it's, you don't want to surprise them at the very end if the project has changed substantially. And this is, you know, I think largely the same as what you kind of envisioned. It's just reduced, but we should be letting them know as well.
Yeah, we have our 40B consultants who are, who are, who'll handle that. So.
Okay, great. And it doesn't sound like the, there's any new issues the board wants peer review on. Is that correct? For, I mean, just, just David to you and then through the board. If there's any other issues that have come up, you want peer review, you should be asking now so you can get that queued up. It sounds like everything's, you have the expertise you need. Is that correct?
Britain with TAC, it sounds like we do engineering department, Brian. Let's see, I'm looking for their. No, they They have some conditions and recommendations, but I don't know if we fully
We've met with Bill Renaud on the, on the drainage infrastructure. So we're still working, that, that will be part of the finished details now that we have a a plan that it seems that we're agreeing on.
Sounds good. And then the only other thing I'd raise is the timeline. I think give an extension until November 30th. I believe, and I want to just be sure that subcommittee has the time to do what it needs to do and then bring it back to you.
Yeah, we've extended through, we've extended the, the public hearing through November 30th with the additional time for, for to render a decision beyond that, the 40 days. So we've, I've already, I sent that to you, Mr. Chair. You got that, I believe.
We do. And just again, for your benefit, Ezra, in case you're not aware of our meeting schedule or other members of the public, we have a meeting schedule for October 27th. And then one November 17th. We typically have one in November, one in December. Just working around the, the major holidays in those two months. So our next meeting, our only meeting in November is the 17th. And I think normally we would want to get ahead of that. So if it didn't look like we were going to be done by November 30th, but maybe close, Brian, we might want to contemplate that at the next hearing, October 27th, if we need to extend that further. If the subcommittee's still meeting, there isn't substantial updates in two weeks. I don't think we'd want to wait till the 17th in case that got continued and we didn't have an opportunity to extend at that point, right?
Yeah.
So we just need to be aware. But again, mark your calendars. The only meeting in November is the 17th currently.
I mean, if I can answer you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Ezra, you know, the way, when I handle these, Ezra, I, I actually like to keep the public hearing open and, and and I like to actually have a decision that with the final plans that are actually, you know, almost when the public hearing is closed, that if, you know, that the board would, you know, would be comfortable, if they are comfortable, then they could actually vote to approve and adopt the decision right there.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a wise plan as long as that's not rushing them, you know, as long as you're granting the extensions, but you keep it open. Yeah.
I always think that that 40-day period is awkward and odd and just creates problems for what you can talk about and can't talk about and.
Yeah, just keep it open until they're ready to vote and then, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments at this time, board members? Okay.
I just wanted Brian McGreal to know, I think your, your name tag appears as brain. Do you recognize that?
It does, actually.
Not sure if that's a violation of your, your oath of lawyerhood.
It probably is. Let me fix that. Thank you. Subliminal, I'm sure.
Yeah. Okay, thanks so much.
Looks good. Okay, so with that, we will open up the public testimony at this time. If you have a comment or question, please raise your hands. We'll entertain that at this time. Mr. Chair? Yes. Joe Bocelli. There's just one comment I want to make. Sorry, Joe, if I can interrupt you. If you can just state your full name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Anthony Bocelli, 31 Cedar Street, North Reading, Mass.
Thank you.
There's one thing I just wanted to say, because I know the neighbors made a couple of comments, you know, about being a developer that just flew in town. I just want to let people know my mother's a Daytona. My grandfather was a shoe carburetor in Wakefield and has been in that house in 46 Crescent Street since the 1940s. So I just wanted to let people know that, you know, and my grandfather owned 44 Crescent Street also. So I just want to let them know I'm not a fly-by-night. I'm here to stick with the town. You know, I, born in this town, graduated in this town. And unfortunately, I don't live in this town right now. But I just wanted to let the neighbors know. I'm, I'm here to go through this. You know, we take care of our property. It's not like, you know, some of the comments that were made really hurt. And I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay. Thank you. Brahman Delavobi.
Hi, yes, Brahman Delavobi, 8 Cyrus Street. I, I wanted to, to thank this board and particularly the subcommittee, Jim and, and Amy, who really did a yeoman's level on, on this. I, I don't recall seeing this board work quite this, I don't want to say diligently, because you're always diligent, but really wrestle with this. And I appreciate that and I wanted to tell you that. And thank you again. I, I do want to say that I absolutely disagree with the characterization of it being a turn of the century architecture. It isn't. We all know that this does not fit in the neighborhood and I'm sorry if some of the comments were, were hurt for, hurtful. But, but had the builder intended to build something that was fitting with the neighborhood that would, would not harm the neighborhood or harm the neighbors, then, then perhaps those comments wouldn't have come. It's been told over and over and over again, everyone is still struggling with the size of this development because we all know it's too big for the location. And I'm sure the developer knows it too. People need to speak freely about what this is going to do to their, their homes, their daily lives, their neighborhood, their traffic, their noise, their lighting and everything else. It doesn't suit the neighborhood and I just needed to say it one more time that I believe that this is, and I will use the word abuse. This is not what 40B was intended to do. And this board has done a very, very diligent job of working with, with what they've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Oh, hi, I can't figure out how to raise my hand. Sorry.
Okay, we hear you. Don't see you, but we hear you.
Katie Kulaga, nine Crescent Hill. You know, thanks, thanks to the board for, for your support. I did want to address Mr. Bocelli's comment. It's really too bad that you're not in the neighborhood because if you were, you would see the overflowing trash that's attracting rats and pests in the neighborhood. And so I'd like to see a more tangible plan for how trash removal will work. Based on my calculations, I expect sixteen to nineteen cubic feet of, of cubic yards of trash a week and similar amounts of recycling. And I'm not confident that there's a plan for this. And I, I'd really like to see that and to understand how those conditions are going to be monitored and, and make sure that they're followed. Thank you for, for your support to the zoning board. We really feel that you are supporting the neighbors.
Thank you, Katie. Brian and team, I think we'll get to that if it isn't already in the plans, right? I mean, the trash, there obviously be operation and maintenance, but just where it's stored in the building. I don't want to get into it tonight, but it's, it'll be represented on the plan if it isn't already, and we can get into that. Ensure everyone understands what the plan is, right?
Correct. Okay. There'll be an operation and maintenance plan, and that's one of the benefits of the board handling this project instead of it going to the state because you'd be able to condition it as we discussed numerous times on, on issues like were just raised.
Right. Okay. Okay, Katie, yeah, we, we know. We got it. But appreciate that. All right. Anyone else?
And I'd like to just say on the trust, Mr. Chairman, because I can't let that go. Okay, you know, my client leases these properties. And as you know, once people have a leasehold interest in property, it's sometimes you can't just enter on the property they have, right? So, so perhaps there are issues on, on one of these properties and my client is, addresses that the best he possibly can. And so it's not like he's just saying, I don't care. As a matter of fact, he informed me today that there's, there's actually an action that is, is, is being brought to deal with some of these issues. So he hears the neighborhood on these issues. He's just not ignoring it. But sometimes when there's a tenancy situation is a landlord, you're limited on what you can do on the property. That's all.
Thanks.
Thanks. It's not just one though.
Okay. I don't see any other hands raised, so we will close with the public testimony for the evening. So the plan going forward is for the subcommittee to have one or more meetings before October twenty seventh, I presume. And we'll see where we are at that point. If there's any topics we can bring back to the full board. Again, versus waiting for everything to be done, but certainly start to attack these details in some order. And then bring them back in two weeks and see where we are, I assume.
Good. Chairman, I wonder if two weeks is too quick. Well, they got, they got a lot of detail, or I mean, we've given them the, the charge to kind of put the bow on this package. To do that in two weeks seems unrealistic. I don't think there are any major issues to talk about anymore.
No, no, but there's a the final design, just make sure that, that, that all those, you know, designs and, and elevations are final landscaping, materials, operations and maintenance, you know, incorporating the T A C stuff. It, it, you know, I know, Brian, I, yeah, it might take several weeks to get through all that. But is the, is the idea that maybe the design and the landscaping might be ready in two weeks or or what do you want to do? Do you want to continue for two weeks or?
I, I think we, well, I can defer, I'm going to defer to Peter. Peter, what do you think on putting some of this together? I have no problem deferring for two weeks. If it's not ready, we would just let you know. And at that time, I, I'll tell you right now that I would extend your, I would extend the public hearing because I wouldn't want to just send a letter. Because then you'd be going to November seventeenth and concerned with expiring. So Peter, what do you think on timeframe for some of these? Because Jim's looking for some of the cross sections, et cetera.
Remember, we need to go to the subcommittee first and then come back to the board. So
That's right. What do you think, Ezra?
I think that it, it might be better to give the subcommittee more time and have a cleaner package come back to the full board rather than a lot of unknowns and questions. It just seems to you have pretty full agendas. I'd rather have a, a cleaner package come on the seventeenth rather than a half one come with promise of more. But I think a lot depends on Jim and Amy, how, how quickly they think they can review stuff and shuffle their schedules to me.
I, 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 I'm going to say right up front, I, I agree with Ezra because that time comes fast because, you know, anything we have to, anything that's going to be discussed, we've got to submit it a week from Friday, right? So, you know, so two weeks isn't really two weeks, right? Right, Mr. Chair?
Agreed. As long as we, as long as we meet on the seventeenth, if for nothing else, to extend the hearing if the team's still working on things.
I think I would just extend it tonight.
Or, or you, well, we could do that too.
If the board would entertain that, I just, I, you know, I, I, again, I don't have an issue doing that. And I just, I, I said from day one, my, I do not want to put the board in a, in a awkward position with that. And, and I don't want to be either. So I'd rather, you know, if, if we're going to go to the seventeenth, then I would extend the, the public hearing date till the end of December.
Yeah, I think we should do that. If we're going to do that, I, I think that's a prudent thing to do.
So the question I have is with one meeting in November, one meeting in December. Should you, you know, it's okay to finish early. Is it better to bump it to sometime in January, Brian? So we're just not doing this at every meeting?
At this point, I'd rather just go to the end of the year, Chip.
Okay.
I mean, you know,
Just asking the question.
Because what I'm, what I'm hoping is, I mean, is potentially if, if we're close, perhaps the board could consider a special meeting if we're like, you know, you know, right at the, right at the goal line and you need one more.
Like the twenty fourth of December or something?
Right. Or the thirty first.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Let's do that. So our board members.
I, 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 let me weigh in here. I agree with where this is going. I don't think, you know, there might be two meetings. I'm going to suggest that there are two meetings. And the weight is on Peter and James, although a lot of his work is done. And there's been no, I, I know Chip always likes to weigh in on landscape. And James has done something at this point. It hasn't been weighed in on because, because the whole object of this meeting basically is to get approval to move forward in the concept that's put forth. So in my mind, in my mind, basically, I'm with Ezra, basically, we should try and tie this out and give ourselves enough time to do it. Even in the fact that I'm going to be looking at architectural details along with Amy. Basically, and I want to, it is probably going to be a few back and forth to make sure this comes together properly so that when we come back to you all, basically we have something that's ninety nine point nine percent wrapped up. And in, for our recommendation anyway, so pushing this out a little bit further, I absolutely agree with.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Anyone else before we proceed to some votes here so we can move things along? Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to extend the public hearing on this matter from November thirtieth to December thirty first.
I move that we continue the public hearing from November thirtieth to December thirty first.
Thank you.
No, that's, that's not point of order. Mr. Tabell just said continue the public hearing. So I think, I think, I think you wanted an extension of the time.
I did say public hearing. So what should it, for the time to make a decision?
Just extend it, the public, extend the vote to agree with the, with the applicant to extend the public hearing date until he, until December thirty one, two thousand twenty one.
Isn't that what I said?
The, the public hearing date, the, 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 the time, the, the, the timeframe of the public hearing, right, Ezra? Is that?
Right. You just, you don't want to make it look like you're extending the next meeting will be
Yeah.
December thirty first.
All right, the timeframe for the
Yeah.
However, you guys want to work.
So I'll word it and then you can follow with so moved, okay? Because I'm reading the last letter. That the chair would entertain a motion that the applicant and board agree that the time for the board to conduct the public hearing on the above referenced comprehensive permit application. This hearing is extended until December thirty first, two thousand twenty one. And the board will also have forty days after that termination of the public hearing to render a decision.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe? Joe, come off mute.
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes. So that's unanimous. Okay. So that part's taken away, taken care of. Now we're we're going to continue the, the, the hearing to our next full board meeting. And that would be November seventeenth, right?
Right, which is not, which is not our next full board meeting. It's a meeting after our phone. So just I move that we continue this to November, the full board meeting on November seventeenth.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you for the updates tonight. Good luck, subcommittee. Continue on and we'll talk again in five weeks.
And then these, these materials are all posted on the website. Is that correct? Or will be?
That's a good question. We've, we've attempted to get things posted.
Okay. Just so the public know where they can find things.
Yeah. Well, Gail has, Gail has everything. Because she's, she's, so if, if the public wanted anything that was discussed tonight, that's been submitted to the board. So the board secretary has that. She controls that. If, if, if the board, Mr. Chair, if you want to set it up on a website, I'm happy to work with the town website person to do that.
Okay, we can take that one offline. And if so, then we can make that, make that known. Okay.
Sorry to throw a wrench. I just, I thought it was already there.
Yeah, but everything, everything that was presented tonight was submitted in advance and the board, board, it's in the board records and the board secretary has.
This is how we've done every, every one forever.
Sounds good.
Right. Thanks. But a few of these big ones we have discussed. Setting up webpages we have for Quanta Power and Tarrant Lane. And so anyway, we'll take that one offline. But, but, okay. Thank you again. And we're, we're done with this one for the evening. Moving on to our next continued hearing, twenty one fifty, fifty one and fifty two CCF Quanta Power Property Company LLC at two hundred to four hundred Quanta Power Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record. Attorney Brian McGrail here on behalf of CCF Quanta Power Property Company LLC. Now, the applicant at two hundred, four hundred Quanta Power Parkway. I, although my client is in attendance on here, Matt D'Amico is here somewhere. I think I can be rather brief tonight. I want to give the board an update on where we are with the project and also where we are with the traffic advisory committee, because that's something that the board has been waiting, waiting on. We've, we've had to give additional information to the T A C. I spoke with Lieutenant Anderson today. He has now scheduled the traffic advisory committee meeting on this for November fifth. And, and Mr. Lucy and board members, I know you wanted to know that date. So I found that out today. It's going to be November five. They usually meet at either eight or eight thirty in the morning. I don't know what time it will be, but he told me that would be the date. And obviously, it will be posted. So and then obviously you get a report from T A C and, and we'll present our traffic and we can discuss traffic at that, at the subsequent meeting that will be November seventeen. So the other thing that I wanted to report to the board is that we have and we've told you this and you've told us plenty of times, we have heard you as it relates to the commercial component of this project. So we're in the process of doing some revisions to the plan that are going to significantly increase the size of what was a cafe into a, a full, a full service restaurant, which will be much larger than what was proposed. And further amenities, many areas that will serve people on the property, the, the restaurant would serve everybody, the public without doing dining, et cetera. And, and, and we're going to, we're revising our plans. Part of that revision will also include a reduction in units. Because we've heard you loud and clear that you want that incorporated and, and that's going to result in us reducing the unit count by a certain number that we're, we're trying to figure out. So there'll be an adjustment in the plans that will be submitted. When, when we figure that number out, we're going to give it to T A C so they can appropriate they can evaluate it based on that. So we don't have to go back to them twice. I informed Lieutenant Anderson of that today. So that's, that's where we are. And so that's kind of the update. And what we're looking to do is to continue this until your meeting on November seventeenth, because we don't think we'll have anything to discuss on the twenty eighth until we're, we're done with T A C. Okay. And by the way, as far as, we, we also spoke as part of that, what we're proposing to adjust on the commercial aspect with Erin Kekinda, who was a big proponent. And I'm sure the board will want to hear from her, but she'd conveyed to me that she was, was satisfied with that.
Okay. Any comments?
We don't have any new testimony to present, just kind of an update and looking for a continuance until November seventeen.
Yep, in just a moment, though. I did have one more item to add. I just want to give the other board members an opportunity to weigh in. Other board members, any comments or questions?
No, I'm just appreciative that they're looking at the increased commercial aspect of the cross property. I think Greg has stated he was interested in that myself. I think it's good they're following through on that.
Okay, thank you, Chip. So Brian, I would just advise, we've received these correspondence, some correspondence today from the butter at one hundred Quanta Power and the representative. They submitted a letter that's in the record on June twenty second, twenty twenty one with some initial feedback and concerns. I think they even alluded to perhaps doing their own sort of traffic study. We have received a memo from Bayside Engineering dated yesterday with a lot of details and some analysis that I think their, their team has done. I guess I would just, you know, we're not going to get into it tonight, but I would just recommend that you get a copy of that through Gail. And perhaps consider that as part of your updates and anything you may want to consider either before going to T A C or perhaps during, during those deliberations. Again, we just received it, the email today, the memo stated yesterday with some of their traffic findings, I think. They, they would like to support the project, but obviously have concerns on traffic flow and parking and so.
And I know my client has been in touch with them. So, so we will, we will look at that. And I appreciate you letting, letting us know on that.
Okay. So that's the only thing I had. That was just new testimony correspondence we received for the, for the record. So with that, the board members has a common question. We could entertain a motion to continue this to November seventeenth.
I move that we continue this hearing to November seventeenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. So thanks for the updates. I look forward to hearing the results of that meeting and we'll see you on the seventeenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, our next continued hearing is twenty two dash ten, Nicole McShane at thirty four Payon Boulevard.
Good evening, board members. My name is Garrett Lepresty, sixteen Penny Hill Road, Melrose. I am the contractor and representative for McShane's. Just to refresh everyone's memory, I will try to pull up the plans here.
Are the McShane's on? I don't see.
I think they are here.
Okay. My, my screen went sideways again. Amy, I might have to leave it come back, but.
I see Nicole is on.
Okay.
Are we seeing the plans?
Not yet. Not yet.
And? How's that?
I think they're coming up. It's just a black screen right now.
Still nothing?
No.
Oh, there we go, well, you're saying share entire screen, and then hopefully we'll see something. All right. Better.
Okay.
I don't know if you, can you rotate it, maybe counterclockwise? We're all seeing it sort of sideways.
Yeah.
That little arrow in the middle of the top of the, by the hundred percent, see, there's a little arrow? Yeah. There we go. Yep.
If I can move it over a little bit more. There we go. So here is your existing floor plan with the attached garage eighteen by twenty-three. And this is the proposed plan to convert that eighteen by twenty-three area to a living space for her elderly mother, um, so it's a more comfortable living situation for them. So I think the, the couple of questions from the last meeting that the, the board members had were, one with the DPW about a fee. Um, so I have a letter that was provided by, uh, Gail, thank you, thank you, Gail, from the DPW. I'm gonna see if I can switch over to that. Just stating that, uh, the fee that they're requesting is just prior to the building permit approval. So that was the first issue, and the other was the square footage if it meets the requirements of the, the bylaws, and just, uh, I can't pull that one up. Uh, so just some quick math, uh, the principal dwelling is a total of two thousand two hundred eighty-three square feet, twenty-five percent of that is five hundred and seventy point seven-five square feet, and the proposed area eighteen by twenty-three is four hundred and fourteen square feet, so that is less than the twenty-five percent. Let's just go back to the other plan.
And do you have any sort of official plan from a site plan or any architectural plan that certifies that the square footage of the dwelling is?
This is, this is from an architect, uh, Peter Tomino is the architect.
No, but you just showed us a handwritten plan, we typically see them on, that information on a plan, in some sort of official form. What's that?
I'm sorry, you mean the calculation?
Yes.
Uh, that I do not have, no, I just, I just pulled up the, um.
So where did you arrive at that total square footage number then?
Uh, from, from Zillow. Um, just online, twenty-two eighty-three square feet.
No, 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 no. You need to get the architect to basically run the calculations, put it on his, his letterhead or on his drawings with a stamp on it, so that we have it certified, taking it off Zillow is not taking it off the site.
Okay, so, so you, you want an entire floor plan of the entire house?
We need the same calculations that you ran off Zillow to be on the plans, along with a date, along with, uh, an architect's stamp, basically that certifies, basically, that this is the calculation from the site.
Okay.
I wasn't here last time, but I did watch the video, I thought that was made clear, um. You know?
No.
I think this board, it, it's trying to be difficult here, but we, you know, the things we, you know, we really need to, to sort of, sort of draw the line on, and, and really that, um, you know, the calculations are important, I mean, it, it sounds like it's not like so close that, you know, but we, we need to know that that number is true. Again, it's, it, it has to be at least three hundred square feet, now by just the dimensions of the garage, it does appear to be at least three hundred feet, right, that isn't the only number, you did review the bylaws as the board requested, right?
Yes.
Okay, cuz it does say at least three hundred, so you need to at least attest to that, and that would be shown on a plan. Um, and not exceed twenty-five percent of the habitable area. Now again, whatever's on Zillow might include a garage, it might include a basement, it might include things that would not fit the definition of habitable area, we don't know, and that's why we need a, an architect to certify that. Um, you can't extend or enlarge the dwelling, which it doesn't look like you're doing, so there's several requirements here, right? Beyond just the calculation, and, and you would need to demonstrate on a plan and through testimony that you're not, that you're meeting all these requirements. So, I, I think, yeah, Jim's comment stands, in my mind.
Yeah, I, I'm, Kim, confirm if I'm right, but to get a building permit, you're gonna need a site plan, uh, new site plan anyway, right?
We generally have it, yes.
Yeah, I mean, he's gonna have to confirm that, yeah, that we have a site plan with this as well.
Okay.
And that may exist already in the title.
Okay, I can provide that.
And Dave, this is Greg, I just have one thing too, cuz we had this come up, this is going in the garage, we had this come up on another project where we had one in the garage, make sure you're paying attention to what goes into the current habitable area versus the new habitable area, because you're, depending on how you calculate, you could be adding habitable area, so, um, we had a round and round discussion probably about a year ago on that. Same type of project.
Okay.
But again, an architect is typically well-versed in that kind of thing, um. Okay, anyone else? All right, and I will just add, again, for the benefit of, um, cuz I have a feeling this is gonna get continued again, um, the future discussion is, um, you may have picked up on it with, um, the previous hearings, the board, um, ideally would get any updates you have a Friday before our planned hearing, so that we'd have an opportunity to review the information you send us, um, and be prepared, uh, at the meeting, rather than seeing it for the first time when you start to share your screen. Um, it helps everyone, um, it helps the discussion, ensures that there's no surprises, and if there's anything that we think is missing, you'd have an opportunity, we'd have an opportunity to respond to your email, and ensure that, again, we've got all the information we think we need to, uh, advance the, the proposed application, you know? Um, so, if you think, do you think you can do that in two weeks? Because again, you'd have to send us something by next Friday, a week from this Friday.
Yeah, I can, I just, it was a misunderstanding on, on my part, as far as the, um, uh, the calculations of the square footage, so I apologize for that, um, I didn't wanna waste anybody's time, but I can, um, I can get that taken care of.
Okay.
To you guys on the Friday.
Okay, and you can send it to Gail, she'll forward it on, you know, if you have her email, I think you've corresponded right already, so, um, just as long as you get it to Gail, she'll get it all out to the rest of the board members, and then we could proceed with this, um, you know, if you've got all that, uh, then on the twenty-seventh, okay?
Okay.
All right, board members? Need a motion to continue?
You're not going to public?
Uh, well.
Up to you. I'm happy to make.
I don't see any significant new testimony here, he shows.
Okay, I move that we continue this to November seventeenth, no, October twenty-third, sorry.
Or twenty-seventh.
Or twenty-seven.
Second.
Second on the twenty-seventh, okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
And I vote yes, okay. So we'll look for something for you by the end of the week, uh, next week, and we'll see you on the twenty-seventh, thank you.
Okay, thank you again.
Okay. On to new hearings. Twenty-two dash thirteen, and I am just gonna proceed with the address, Two Sugar Hill Lane. Um, I'm not sure if it represented, I apologize, I probably really butchered your names as well, and I apologize, perhaps you can share them with us, so we get them right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, I, I do represent the applicants. Okay. Aditya Bandal, Poonam Devakka, Anil Singh, and Davishri Mukaji. Uh, and they are the, uh, collective owners of property at Two Sugar Hill Lane, they're actually, uh, it's a, it's a two-family dwelling that has been condominiumized, and, and so there's two, two units, and in all of the parties that I just named are the owners of that property at Two Sugar, Two Sugar Hill Lane. Um, and they have, um, what I look is, is a pretty, uh, straightforward request for the board, um, with kind of a, um, uh, good justification for the request for the, uh, variance that they're looking for, to put a deck on the back of, of their property, uh, at Two Sugar Hill Lane. Um, so I've had, I submitted a site plan, uh, prepared by Paul Finocchio, um, and what I did, I'm gonna kind of familiarize you with the site, kind of a, talk about an odd-shaped lot. So this is Vernon Street, is your, it, my, my cursor is coming from Water Street on Vernon, and then you would take a left on Sugar Hill Lane, um, and this house, uh, at, um, Two Sugar Hill Lane, uh, that is owned by my clients, is this structure, the, the two condominium units, um, is the first lot on the left. Um, and, um, what they are seeking is a variance to allow them to put a deck on the rear, the topography is drastic in this situation. Um, and, um, so, uh, because of, you, you look at the, um, this really has two unique circumstances, it has, uh, topographical circumstances that are unique, uh, and it also has lot-shaped circumstances that are unique. Um, it does meet our lot-shaped requirement under our bylaw, but it is certainly unique. Um, and basically, um, if you look, I had, uh, Mr. Finocchio, who did the plot plan and, and served a zoning table, um, and where the deficiencies are here, this is in the general residence district, is on the side yard, it's currently a ten-foot setback, um, you can see that right here. And this deck would be for virtually no impact here, which I'll show you why to anybody on where they're trying to do this, and then in the rear, um, it's a twenty-foot requirement, which is met, as you can see from this tie line, in the back of the deck would be nine point nine feet. Um, and I don't see a huge impact here, the, uh, the abut is here, are eighty-two Vernon Street, uh, which, uh, are in support of, uh, the application, which I'll share with, uh, the board, uh, in a minute. Like, I guess I can share that now, um, maybe that's the easiest way to do it. We saw the letter, and then it went away. Is it there now? No, it was there, and it just went away. Sorry. Okay, that was gonna be my first question, did you talk to the neighbors behind you? You're not gonna be having cookouts and parties on this back deck, and. Yeah, so this is, these are the folks at eighty-two, uh, the owners, David Patty and Phil Polisi, who my clients, uh, approached, good neighbors, they get along, and, and as you can see, you can read that, they support the application. Okay, and you'll submit that for the record, cuz we don't. Yep, I will, I'll do that, uh, as soon as we're done with the hearing. Um, and, and we don't have an updated plan with the table on it. Yep. And then, um. Yeah, if we go back to that, and just make sure we're all set on all the other numbers there. Yeah, and I just wanted to show the board, cuz I thought this might be helpful. So this kind of gives you an idea of the topography. This is, this is my client's house, so as you can see, this really has no impact um, on anybody where that four-foot setback is, because this house is way set up high with the topography. Um, there's no neighbor on this side, except for the folks on on Vernon. I'll take you there. So that shows you the topography up high on that side, it's already actually fenced, and, uh, the only folks that potentially could have an impact would be at eighty-two in, in there in support of the application, this is the back of the property. Um, you can kind of see, it's just kind of awkward, they have steep stairs, and it's just, they're gonna get a lot more function, um, out of their property, both, both of these unit owners would get along very well, you can see the back of their property. Um, so that there's a side door on the unit, fire unit, then, and that's what kind of requires that four-foot setback to get out of the deck, and this unit will have direct access from up high.
Brian?
Yes.
When I, when I looked at this, um, from aerial view, there is a huge amount of asphalt in the back, how is this deck affecting that? Maybe you can pull up the aerial for a moment, so everybody can see it.
Oh, God. I might need to, I might need somebody else to do that, let me see. I don't think I can do that, Jim, with my software, um, maybe somebody else. Any interest of time, can you just describe? Is the deck going over part of the pavement, and?
Yeah, the whole back, the, the, about fifty percent of the backyard is, is, uh, you can see the driveway are from, um, Sugar Lane, it swings into the backyard, and about fifty percent of the backyard what is asphalt, basically, and there's a grass behind it, so it's, it's this radial element, basically, that swings into the backyard.
Yeah.
Asphalt.
I mean, I don't think it's really gonna affect it, it'll just go on, it'll be above it.
Well, I, I don't know what the, you know, I, I, when I look at it, and I look at how far the deck's coming out, I'm wondering how, if, in fact, that asphalt area is supposed to be for parking or something like that, it's gonna be a little difficult, basically, to get cars back there if the porch is supported on some sort of column, basically, that restricts passage to the back of the yard.
Yeah, it's not, it's not necessary for parking, I think it was more just to be able to drive around, um, because, because these, these are, these, these, um, units meet the parking requirement, they, they each have a two-car garage.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not questioning the amount of parking, I'm just questioning what is it used for, and can you get access back there once you, once this is constructed?
Um, let me see.
Does it really matter to us?
Yeah.
Whether they wanna leave asphalt or?
No, I, I just think the full, the board needs to see the full picture, not just the street picture, but from above as to what it looks like. You can all say it doesn't matter, I just, I just say, you need to understand the full scope.
They can leave it asphalt for storage under there, I don't care.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Chip on this, this is for setback or something outside plan approval, so.
Um, the applicants can speak up if you wanna come off mute and tell us. Uh, Anil, or.
You can see the garages are on the side of the house, so it's not, it is nothing, they're not impacted by the tech at all. So if that's the question.
Y- yeah, I mean, that area really is to just drag the car into the garage, but we don't do really much into that, and then, like, right now, uh, the grassy area is where, uh, you know, it, that, that's the place where we go and grill and, you know, do some activities, but that doesn't get impacted by that deck. So the deck is, other than, maybe you can speak a little bit, because your garage is towards the back.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yeah, just identify yourself, Aditya, please.
Yeah, so this is other table now, uh, we live at, uh, two B Sugar Hill Lane, so maybe I can just share my screen and, uh.
Oh, good.
All right, can you guys, uh? So the, the deck is pretty much gonna. So the, the deck is pretty much going to come, if I can, you know, use my cursor, it's going to be in this area right here. And if the question about the construction, right, there's going to be one post, there are going to be three posts. So one post right here on the, on the one side of the building, one post right here in the middle and one post right here at the other end. And they're going, and the entryway into the garage is going to be open so that the cars could come in and out. Was that the question?
I think that's where Jim was going, right, Jim?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, if in fact that's important access, my only question whether the deck is going to obstruct that access. Not so much about setback off the property except for access purposes. And everybody can see here, there's quite a bit of asphalt out back there.
Yeah, and it won't impact the access because the garage, the entryway into the garage is going to be open at the bottom. And there's a beam that's going to come on top, so the posts are going to be on the, right in the center, right off the garage. And they're going to be, and the other post is going to be here, but it's actually, this is the deck for, or the patio for two A Sugar Hill Lane. And yeah, so there wouldn't be any impact because this is the driveway going into the garage.
Okay. Thank you for sharing, I think it helps. All right, any other comments or questions, board members? All right, we did receive some correspondence for the record from the town engineer. They've reviewed it and there are no applicable comments, CONCOM is not, the project will not render it to their jurisdiction, will not require further review. And the fire department, no objections or concerns, so. The town boards see no issues. Yeah, my primary question, you answered upfront, was anytime there's some sort of residential addition going on, have you talked to your neighbors, right? And so they know clearly what is being proposed and that you've got their support, or if you don't, you work those things out perhaps coming, you know, before coming to the board. So, and I do, I do agree, given the topology and shape of this lot, the ledge, you know, you want to have a deck that's reasonable, it's a reasonable combination and it does appear to have minimal impact on, on any of the butters with those setbacks, so. I don't have any concerns, any other board members want to offer a comment or question before we open it up? Okay. All right, we'll open up the public testimony, if anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Looking for yellow hands or waving hands. Seeing none will cause of the public testimony. So Brian, you just need the one variance, right, there isn't a continuation on this one or there is?
No, just a variance.
Just a variance.
Because it complies currently, it's not a continuation, okay.
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance under Article ten, Section one ninety-sixty-six to allow the deck to be built as presented by the plans from Paul PJF and Associates. Dated, dated, come on, Paul, where's your date?
Nine twenty-one.
Nine twenty-one twenty-one, as presented to us this evening.
Second.
Actually, the date is one twenty twenty twenty-one.
With a revision date.
He revised it to have the table from what we have in our plans.
Yeah.
What is that on the other page?
Nope, right above the original date.
On the screen, Chip.
Yeah.
Oh, not on our package?
No, I had him do that because I just wanted him to do it, he didn't change the plan, but I thought it'd be prudent to put a zoning table on it.
Okay, thank you, as revised nine twenty-one twenty-one, as amended, I amend my motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Our regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Go.
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, so that is unanimous. You have your variance and Brian will work offline to get the decision taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next new hearing, twenty-two dash fourteen, twenty-two dash fifteen, Nellie Street Nominee Trust at six Nellie Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail representing Nellie Street Nominee Trust. Let's see, my client, Majid, my client on this, the owner of the controlling person of the trust, the trustee is Dr. Majid Pushari, Pushadi, who is on tonight with us. I'll be doing the presenting, but if there's any questions that need to, need to be answered, Dr. Pushadi can certainly participate as we go. This property is situated at six Nellie Street in Wakefield. This is one of those circumstances where the property historically has been used as a three-family dwelling. But, you know, as you know, I go back and I try to confirm the grandfathering on, in these situations with furious street lists, et cetera. I have not been able to do that on this property. So it has three units, it's been used, the three units for quite some time, the records, I can get a few things I wanted to share here, might be helpful to the board.
So I guess you're here because even though it's been used as a three-family, somewhere officially it's listed as two-family.
Yeah, so this is kind of the record from the assessor, you can see it goes back to the, you know, ninety-five, it's always been a three-family, it's currently assessed as a three-family. It has three units, I'm going to go through the floor plans. So what we're doing is, we're seeking a special permit to convert a two, because two, this is in the general residence district where two, two families are allowed into a three-family dwelling. And we're looking to increase the size of the, really the size of the, of the, of the third-story unit to make it more functional, number one, and also to allow for proper egress from a co-perspective to put some stairs within the unit instead of outside. So I'm going to stop this and I'll bring up the floor plans. Okay, these are architectural plans, this kind of gives you an idea of what the property looks like currently. And this is existing basement floor plan, which is not changing. Just kind of run you through existing first floor plan. Existing second floor plan. Want to go too fast, existing third floor plan. This is where we're proposing to have some changes. So, Dr. Pushadi, are you here? Can you go off mute? You're on mute, Dr. Pushadi. Yeah. But we still can't hear you. And I'm going to, I'm going to take the ball here, I'll walk through this. So this is the proposed first floor plan. This is the proposed second floor plan, and this is really, I think, where a couple of changes are happening entirely when they're not side by side. So you might want to take a snapshot of this in your mind if you could. There's a, there's a little bit of a change happening in here for access purposes, but it's really hard to even see. It's really just moving around within the unit, but the proposed third floor plan is where the change is happening, we're looking to put go on top of what, of the second floor in this footprint. And then also expand out a little bit to allow a staircase here. So now you have two means of egress coming out of that third floor unit. And scratch that, I'm sorry, I apologize, is, is the, is the area which is going to be easier when you see the elevation on what's happening here.
And all the changes you're describing are within the existing footprint.
Within the footprint, yeah, so this is not, this, this dormer is currently, is currently two separate dormers. And we're looking to merge that into one. And then this, this, this is, this would be built up in this area. Okay. Then you can kind of see this from the rear with that dormer. So we need to, so, so here's your, here's your elevation.
So what is that back portion now?
There's nothing, and, and Dr. Pushadi, you can, you can shake your head, we can't hear you, but just to, to make sure, in this area right here, this, this doesn't exist right now on the third floor, correct? Hold on a second.
We're going to need a nod, we can't hear him, he might have to leave on.
I'm going to deal with this, hold on. All right, so why don't you talk through the phone so the board can hear you, okay?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry about that. It seems that they have a little issue with my computer.
That's fine, so this works, so, so we can make sure that the, what I was conveying to the board, this area where I'm showing on the computer up on this level doesn't exist right now on the third level, correct? Yeah. Yeah. And any, is there any other exterior addition that we're proposing here besides that, Dr. Pushadi?
Not much.
We're, we're changing this dormer, this is a double dormer, which will now be a single dormer, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And those, those are the changes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I, do you have a table somewhere that outlines the other numerical requirements to ensure that this?
I do, I can do that. I can, yeah, I can, I can do that, so that's why, so what we're doing is, we're seeking a, let me, let me get to that table if I can, let me stop sharing this.
Well, just before we go, any questions or comments from other board members on what they just saw, I just, I didn't know if it was on the same file or plan, but. Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to show you, so we did submit a site plan. As I've mentioned, historically, this has been used for, as a three-family, I was down there today, there's, there's plenty of parking up front, that's existing, Dr. Prasad, he said currently six cars fit there very easily. This is the area in the back, which will be built up. Okay. I think we are referring to, Mr. Chair, is in the bylaw. So we have a single or two-family dwelling, which we have, this would be classified as either or probably a two because of the legality issue in a general residence or business district, may be converted when the existing building's footprint and volume, so we are within the footprint, but we have an issue with the volume, because we're changing that to a three or four family. So there are certain requirements, and this is why we've asked for variances, is it, it's, the dwelling has to be on a thirteen thousand square foot lot, we don't meet that requirement. We do not meet the requirement of thirty-five hundred square feet for dwelling unit. And we do meet the requirement of six hundred fifty square feet for each dwelling unit. And then a special permit needs to be obtained from the Board of Appeals. The, this is not the business district, so D doesn't apply, if it was, it would. And then we have to meet building code and fire health and safety, which this is actually going to enhance that unit to provide better egress than from what's currently up there now. So, so we're seeking, we've applied for, and are requesting a variance from from one ninety-three-two G of the bylaw to allow an expansion of the volume of the building and relief from not meeting the requirements in that section as stated.
Brian, how big is the lot?
Let me go back there, Tom.
And is there a sheet in your submittal that showed those numbers of what the actuals are? I didn't see it.
Of, of what, oh, what we have for the, for those?
Yeah, so we know what we're varying.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, right, I didn't see it in the submittal, so I'm wondering if I missed it or you have a copy of something.
This is so the lot is five thousand five hundred fifty-one square feet, eighty-two feet of frontage.
And it's supposed to be thirteen thousand?
For, for a conversion, Tom, yeah, in that section of the bylaw, correct?
In each dwelling unit should be thirty-five hundred, what is each dwelling unit going to be?
Dwelling unit should be six fifty, you know, we can, we, they are not labeled, but they're all, but we can do that, Mr. Chair, we're happy to, we're happy to revise the plans to, you know, to put those numbers on the plan, if you'd like us to do that, if it, if it's, if it's, you know.
I think they should be there in what we approve, so it's clear that we've approved the variance from six fifty to whatever they are. And
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that.
Okay. I mean, the other one is just thirty-five hundred square feet per dwelling unit, we know we don't have that.
And the other.
It's only thirty-five, yeah. Okay. Okay. So I'm sorry, was there another question, somebody asked you to go back to this plan? Was it Tom?
No, hold on. I'm not saying that to you, Mr. Jim, I've got my client here, so.
I mean, the other, Dave, the other thing that I see is the site plan we're using is a mortgage site plan. We never really allow that, do we?
Well, it's, it's stamped by a professional surveyor. You know, a lot of mortgage, that's why we utilize this.
Okay.
I mean, we're happy to update that, Chip, if you want something else, I understand, you know.
No, I, we usually don't say it's stamped, sorry.
Yeah, I'm okay where it's, where it is presented by them, yeah. But I'd just like to see that, the breakdown of the individual unit square footage, that's all, just for the record.
Yeah, I think, we, you know, before the board will move forward, I want to get that revised for the record. I think it's, it's a point well taken, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anyone else? While you're contemplating, just for the record, we received correspondence from the engineering department, they've reviewed the plans, no comments or concerns, same with CONCOM, not in their jurisdiction, will not require further review. Fire department, typical comments, I would say, all applicable fire and building code, including requirements of hard-wired smoke and CO detectors must be met. Are they there today?
That will be, there's going to be construction here, so we know we need to meet with the fire department to make sure we meet the requirements, we're not going to get a building permit or an occupancy permit unless we do that. We're hoping, we're hoping that we don't need to sprinkle because we don't think it's going to constitute substantial, but that's going to be a decision of the fire department, but I, you know, that kind of goes to, you know, I kind of look at those memos from the fire department as a heads up to the board, you know, to the applicant through the board, but not necessarily. But not necessarily that it will be a condition of your board because, you know, as your board has discussed, we can't get a building permit unless they sign off and they're satisfied with what's happening here.
Understood. And it does say, you know, any substantial renovation will require, so.
That's right.
Yep, for further determination, but yeah, and. Yep. And detectors in the common area must be monitored. Is there a common area? Then the stairwells are forms of egress.
Yeah, in the, in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are some notes here from the fire department.
Yeah.
You'll you'll address those directly with them. Okay. Anything else, board members? As Brian said, they're requesting two forms of relief, the special permit to enact the conversion. And in doing so, they'd also need a variance because they don't meet some of the requirements.
Yeah, and I'm in. You know, if the board's inclined on this petition, I would, I want to, would want it continued so I could correct those plans for the record before it's approved.
Okay.
I, I, I think your point's well taken, Mr. Chair. It's important to document those properly before.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, it's Mike Feely. I'd like a little more information on the parking. It doesn't seem to be. I don't know. I don't know if there's six there. It seems to be we're taking the word for it. Is there something the architect could do to line it off or at least give us some? Evidence as to the size of it and can six thing. Spaces being there? And are they now?
We can do that.
It just, if you're gonna get, talk to an architect to tweak it. Maybe you can take a peek at that.
I know what you're saying, Mike. You want confirmation it actually works.
Yeah.
Yeah, understood.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I did a drive by. It it looks. Pretty good size, but again, it would be good to get that confirmed.
No, because it's unmarked. I I understand.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's a big open space, but yeah, okay. All right, anyone else?
I would just be interested to hear since I, I mean, it looks like it's definitely was used for three family anyways. It looks like this three. Electric meters, whatever you call them when I was there anyways.
Oh, yeah. Hard to miss right on the front porch.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed when I turned the corner. Okay.
Like a transformer.
Just if you've, if. I mean, I guess we'll hear when we open it to public anyways. I know it's not a setback, but if you've talked to anybody in the neighborhood about. I know we usually do that about setbacks, not necessarily changing the use here. But if anyone in the neighborhood, if you had talked to anybody yet, Brian?
No, we really didn't. We didn't.
I know it's not changing you, so I don't, I'm not saying you shouldn't.
The town is, the town is one neighbor. They own it and it's affordable housing right next door.
Oh, okay, okay.
There is.
That brown house? Okay.
Yeah. I know my client talked to one neighbor. I'm not sure who who was was fine with it.
Okay, and yeah, we'll hear in public.
Yeah, maybe someone's here from the public that I'm not sure.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Okay. With that, we will open up the public testimony then. Please, if you have a comment or question, raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Or wave in your video if you. Can, and I'll call on you at this time. Seeing no hands, we'll call it the public testimony. So Brian, you you prefer to continue and.
Yeah, I want to. Your point is very well taken, and now Mr. Feely has something that he wants to see, so. You know, I'll probably get somebody like, you know, I'll probably get somebody like Hayes involved in engineering and and, you know, kind of lay this out a little bit. Maybe a little bit better than the mortgage plot plan. And. In in adjust some. Put some numbers on the architectural plans. To make sure it's documented properly. I agree a hundred percent.
Okay.
So I will request for us to have time to do that, that you would continue this to your meeting on November seventeenth.
Becoming a full agenda then, but yeah, sure.
Hopefully this would be.
So you have an adequate time to do it.
Yeah, I'm just gonna confirm my client for one minute if you.
Sure.
Dave, you can take me off the video black hole if you want.
Fine with that, Mr. Chair, that seventeenth is, you know, we we think it realistically, we're not going to be ready on the on the twenty seventh.
Okay.
So I move that we continue this to our November seventeenth meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, hearing now regular voting membership.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
And I go, yes, okay, so we'll see you then.
I don't think, just want to check on.
In the meantime, Chip, I don't. Why can't I?
It doesn't really matter, but. It says I can't click video on because you have me blocked.
Oh, Amy, you gotta make me co-host again. I had to leave and come back. My system is just not happy tonight. So if you can make me co-host again, I would really appreciate it. Unless Amy, you want to take over. She too has gone rogue.
You might have been the one that blocked out Chip. Inappropriately, so.
You got me, Amy? Making me, you're making me co-host again?
Sorry. Yeah.
And I'll see if I can help you. Should be some.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, we're all set, you said, yep.
Yeah, we're all set. I just want to make sure it's a variance. You've got plenty of time. I just want to make sure there wasn't going to be an issue with constructive approval. It's all set.
All right, our next new hearing. Twenty two dash sixteen seventeen eighteen and nineteen, the Savings Bank. At several addresses, three forty seven Main, three fifty seven Main, three Chestnut, and three forty eight to three fifty Main.
Great. For the record, Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGrail, representing the Savings Bank, who. Has been striving to get to the zoning board for. Couple of years now for. Their, their project. Which, you know, I guess I'm going to kind of me into my way through this and 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 maybe give you a little bit of history, but to start off.
Brian, a little bit.
Okay.
Pretty much aware of all of that, so.
All right, so I I can, and I appreciate that. So let me start by letting you know who's with us tonight. So first of all. Bob DeBeller is here, who's the president and CEO of the Savings Bank. Rachel Calery is here, I believe, who's the vice president of the bank. We also have Peter Ogan from Hayes Engineering, who's our site civil. And we have Tom Galvin and Sam Veldus from L Y F Architects, who are our architects. And also, I think at some point, you're probably going to hear from Jim. Manuel, who's our landscape architect who's involved. So so I'm I'm hearing that you want the footnote version, Mr. Chair, which I I respect if if board members need more detail. The Savings Bank purchased the Hotsun Insurance Building, which is located at Three Chestnut Street, which is adjacent to their property. And it's kind of in the back of the branch at three fifty seven Main Street as you face, as you face the property. With the intent of putting an addition on to the bank. And part of that process involved seeking some zoning changes at town meeting. To facilitate the ability to do that. Which the the Savings Bank is one of the sponsors with other citizens was successful in getting the the zoning bylaw changed. And kind of the. The key, really, the, one of the key provisions on that change was this, which is now in our bylaw. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, which is now one ninety thirty one L. So the Board of Appeals may allow reductions indoor increases to the floor area ratio, maximum building coverage, minimum open area and front yard setback requirements. Of Table Two of the dimensional regulations of the zoning bylaw of the town of Wakefield for a bank building. By special permit in the business district. Any such reductions or increases shall be supported by evidence of lack of suitable land or design considerations or other similar factors. The board must also find that the granting the special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, welfare of the neighborhood of the town. So this was approved by town meeting. It last November, which kind of paved the way for what what we're proposing. Part of that, part of that process also was. Part of that amendment included. Defining a bank and a bank building. So now we know what those are. Bank building is a financial institution authorized or licensed or chartered by the state of federal government. That you can see, and we certainly meet that qualifying. And the bank building is a building solely solely occupied, uses a bank staff by personnel, et cetera. So so we meet the the parameters to qualify under one ninety thirty one L for one of the, one of the parts of relief that we're seeking. Probably the best way to explain the project is let me bring up the site plan. And. Peter Ogan is here to answer any questions is, I don't know, I'm not going to have him go through it because this is a pretty straightforward site plan. For Peter, but he's certainly available if if questions come up from the board. So this is, this is the site plan. Let me, this is the existing conditions plan. I'm going to shrink it down a little bit. And this shows the Hotsun Building in relation to the bank building, which. It's all, it's it's kind of unique because the part of the bank now is the Odd Fellows Building, which has an address of three forty seven Main Street. And those buildings are now connected, but it's interesting because they're assessed as separate lots, and part of what we're going to do here is we're going to merge this whole thing into one. And and make it one building because everything is going to be connected. So the proposal involves raising the Hotsun Building. And constructing and what will be in addition to the bank building and. The Odd Fellows Building, which again are now one. We're showing parking across the street. Because the, because that's important to this whole process because the Savings Bank is the owner of this parking lot across the street where they own. Twenty two parking spaces, and that's why one of our applications is an application to park offsite on property within the same ownership within two hundred feet. Of a property line, which your your board has the authority to allow under the bylaw. So that is the existing plan. This is the proposed plan, which really isn't too much different. But you can kind of see this is going to be the building, which is going to be connected now. And we're actually pulling pulling it away from the neighbors lot line at Five Chestnut Street because that's the old building. And our new building will be pulled away. And I'm going to go through the zoning table. Part of this process, you know, the board is always, I I'm aware, you know, wants to hear from neighbors. We've worked very closely with the owner of the Five Chestnut Street property. It's owned by a company called Chestnut Street Realty Corporation. The president is a gentleman by the name of Roger Becker. He's an attorney who I know. And him and his wife have participated in this design. In in our landscaping plan, and as you will see, when you see the landscaping plan. There's a lot of, lot of, and Jim Emanuel will explain this a little bit, but there's a lot of. Trees with little value, for lack of a better way of saying it, the kind of scrub type trees, oak trees or maples, whatever they are, that. Are on this, on the the Chestnut Street Realty Corporation property. And lean over our property and really kind of create a mess on their property. So we approached them and with the concept of. Allowing us to remove those trees and the roots and to to landscape. Do some landscape improvements on their property instead of the trees and to put a fence, a common fence, it would be in their property. On their property that would kind of benefit both properties. And they are very much, were very much gracious and open to that concept. We met with them a number of times and they are, they are fully in support of this. They are on vacation in Ireland. I went, I texted them yesterday and they told me to convey their support to the board. It was interesting because they they were the ones that suggested that Jim Emanuel be hired because Jim's done work for them in the past, and I said, I couldn't pick a better guy. So. Jim was great to do a common plan. So so these folks are on board with what's happening here with this kind of a common landscaping plan. What we're looking for as far as. Under that one ninety thirty one L for relief, this is the zoning table that factors in all of these lots because this lot. At Three Chestnut Street will be merged into. The three forty seven and three fifty seven Main Street lots. So it's all going to be one lot. So these calculations are based on one building on one lot.
Do you have to go to planning board to do that, Brian?
No. We can, because these lots are in common ownership, it's really going to be just removing. An interior line, so I think that Hayes Engineering will be able to do that with an eighty one Y plan, a perimeter plan. But we have Peter here, Peter, Peter Ogan, could you confirm that, that you'll be able to do that with a perimeter plan, eighty one Y plan?
Yeah, we can do that without, there's a survey certification you can put on a plan if it's all on ownership.
So we're gonna, we're gonna do that and we're gonna record that plan, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Peter.
And then Three Chestnut just goes away, so.
It just goes away. All becomes incorporated in.
Okay.
So what we've got at the end of the day is we have, when these provided numbers. Are everything, including Three Chestnut, the entire campus. So in a, in a business zone, which we're entirely in a business zone now. There's no, there's no square footage required, and we have thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty one square feet. Frontage is required forty, we have a hundred and fifty two feet plus. Front yard setback, okay? What is required is nine feet. And the reason is, there's no, there's no requirement for. Setback in the business district, except if your building is higher than fifty four feet, I'm sorry, higher than fifty feet. It needs to be set back five feet plus one foot for every foot that you're over fit, over fifty feet high. So since we're at the Odd Fellows Building is fifty four feet high. We need, it's above fifty feet. We need to be five feet back. And since it's four feet over the fifty foot requirement. We need an additional four feet. So we need a nine foot setback. We don't have that. And as Peter is showing on the plan, that requires a special permit under one ninety thirty one L, which you're allowed to do now pursuant to the zoning change. There's no side yard or rear yard setbacks in the business district. Open area. The minimum open area is ten percent. We are. We are going to be at six point five percent. So we're asking for that special permit as part of the application to allow that. Just to give you a comparison here. We. The the new addition, and I wanted to point this out, it's the new addition isn't really creating the problem because that has ninety nineteen percent open area. A lot of this is because of. The existing buildings that are on the lot. The floor area ratio is one point five in the business business district. We have two point oh four. And we're requesting a special permit relief for that. Addition is just over. Again, really, the bigger problem is caused by the existing buildings on three forty seven and three fifty seven. The building height we went over. And that is. Fifty four feet. So so basically, we meet the requirement in the bylaw, but. Because it's over fifty feet, it triggers that front yard setback. So. The odd felt in in this fifty four feet has nothing to do with our addition. Our addition is only twenty eight feet high, as you can see from the chat. We kind of want to show the board that, and that's why we put it there. So we need. We need no relief from building height. It's really the front setback that's caused by the height. Building coverage maximum is eighty percent. We have ninety two percent, so we're seeking a special permit on that. Our building coverage on the addition is eighty five percent. As far as parking goes, we have a separate special permit request for that under one ninety thirty six. See of your bylaw to reduce the parking requirements. If you do all these calculations, a hundred and thirteen parking spaces are required. We have twenty two spaces across the street, which is probably more. Than anyone downtown. I also like to point out that being the good citizens they are. That for purposes of this special permit. The number of employees they anticipate, what's going to happen with this addition, it's going to allow the the Savings Bank to take some of its office space on North Ave. And bring their employees together. It's really going to make their operations much more efficient to have them all in one location. And bring their employees together. It's really going to make their operations much more efficient to have them all in one location instead of two separate addresses. Um, so once they do that, the number of employees that they anticipate. Um, at this campus is, is follows Monday fifty two. Tuesday fifty two, Wednesday forty five, because some people work remotely at on Wednesdays, Thursday forty nine and Friday forty six. Now, what the savings bank does, and I think you know this, um, unlike anybody else, they actually rent spaces. So. They have these twenty two spaces that they own. They rent twenty spaces from McDonald's funeral home, eight spaces from, uh, the Wakefield Day of the Item and five spaces from Jack Toronto. So. So that's fifty five spaces. So. They're very, they want to be able to provide their employees places where they know they can park, not to take up. Uh, spaces on Main Street. So. When you factor in what they currently rent in addition to their twenty two spaces, they're accommodating, uh, all of their employees. Um, um, on, you know, off-street parking, if you will. Um, so, so that is the, the, uh, special permit request for the reduction in parking to allow it to go down to twenty two. So what we have is we have applications for, um. For the dimensional issues under one ninety thirty one L, as I've gone through. We have reduction in parking. Um, and we have a special permit request to park off-site on property that we own here. And then we have, um, a request for a, a finding just because we're going to alter a non-conforming building by adding on to it. With a, with a non-compliant setback. So we're asking for a simple finding that what's happening here is not substantially more detrimental. Um, so that kind of lays out the process, if you will. Um, with that said, I'm going to, I'm going to hand it over to Tom. Um, if I could, because Tom will go through the, um, the architectural aspects of this, um, what we're proposing for the addition. Tom, could you? Do you want the screen, Tom?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, it's all yours. Could you introduce yourself to the board, Tom, for the record?
Uh, Tom Galvin with L F Architects, also a resident of Wakefield at twenty eight Crafton Street. Um, so we were hired by the bank to. Design a space for this addition where again, this is to become a central campus. Um, for the bank where they're trying to relocate three other departments, their. Um, commercial retail or commercial loan department, um, their systems department, and then the human resources. So with that, we looked at the square footage that we have on the property. Is approximately thirty two thousand on the site itself. With our addition, you can see we're building out about twenty eight hundred square feet on the property, giving us our setback lines from the property. Um, this gives us on the ground floor, the commercial lending area gives us a new entrance, might mainly for employees. This is not meant to be a public entrance. Um, for the branch bank or anything of that. Um, this will also add to the egress from the staircase that you see in the lower portion of the building right here. Um, it also gives us egress to the back staircase on the property. And then the second floor builds out to the human resource area, and then also their systems or I T department takes care of their computer systems. And then with the elevations, what we're trying to do is match the existing branch building. So again, you can see the scale of the building mimics. The adjacent building, uh, the windows, we're mimicking the same on the second floor for the office use, the double hung windows, we're looking to use aluminum frame windows. Uh, we would trim these out with the same. Character of the existing windows of the branch bank, and then having larger commercial windows on the first level and a commercial entry, um, being aluminum storefront system. On our side elevation, we're looking to use, uh, the cementitious product, um, those of you who are familiar with the, um. Hallmark Health Building down on Main Street in the Greenwood area. It's the same product that's on that building. Uh, it's a flat panel. Um, which we trim out the windows and gives a coursing similar to the brick, only it's a bigger, um, meteor, uh, cementitious panel. And you can see with the perspective that we have, we're blending in to the existing building, uh, almost seamlessly. Uh, some of the character, we're not continuing through the crown moldings and so on, uh, but we are capturing at least a gutter line on our roof. What we're looking to do is salvage a lot of the slate material on the west elevation, which is the. Alleyway roof, um, in order to use on the front elevation of the building so that these two. Roof systems would have a similar appearance using the same material that was the original material. Um, what we'd like to do because of the square footage that we have on. The line on the west, which is the butter property, um, to utilize, um. A resin product which has a similar appearance and character of. The slate material, but dimensionally it will be a little off, but we should meet the coursing similar to what happens with the existing roof. And then also on the side elevation, we use, um. Because of our elevation change, we actually have five feet of grade that builds up on the side property, um. Which, uh, we have a higher clear story window in the offices, and then what we have is an awning type window for the second floor windows. And then we also did a shadow study to show. Little or no impact on the abutis property. So when you look at the somersaults, there's, there's no impact whatsoever. Um, the morning sun is at the left end of the, um. Uh, image, and then the middle is the afternoon, and then the right is the evening, uh, sun angles. And then December would be the lowest point in the sky for the sun. So that's where. Uh, the Santander that building has more of an impact on the butter than our building does. And if you have any questions on materials or anything that we propose.
Tom, can you go back to the, um. Picture you were just on that showed the existing trees, just so, um. The next one. You, you would, you would just clicked on something to show the trees, uh.
Well, what happens with the image, they're overlaid. So.
Oh, okay.
The trees come in and then it disappears.
The board just saw.
An overlay of those.
Yeah. So Tom, can you now go to the materials book that we submitted?
Well, let's just, he asked if there were questions. I have one and. Um, Chip Tar about what, um. Why did you not carry the crown molding of the existing building on to the addition? I'm curious.
Yeah, one of it being, we wanted to have a higher window head in our new addition. So that would have encroached into that. Um, lower area of that crown molding. Um, and we felt that just mimicking the existing building, um. Wasn't necessary in this case. We felt that to modernize the building using aluminum windows, using the storefront system. Um, that we were doing enough with the brick and the slate roof that it helps us. Pull this height up a little more and give us a higher ceiling height than the eight feet that we have in the existing building.
Still going to be white, that, that feature?
Uh, the banding if, uh, uh, I can go to an existing image, um. So you can see that the gray material, that's really what we're meeting. What it is is a lead flashing. So at the. Base of the roof actually transitioned to an internal gutter system. That's what happens inside of this crown molding. Um, so that's all an internal gutter and there's a lead flashing. So we're going to match the gray of that lead flashing around the perimeter of our building.
Actually, that's a great, it's less, less pronounced crown than I, than it shows on that.
Okay, anyone else have a question before we move away from these? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, Jim McMan. Um, why didn't you return the brick in the window style? Down the abutting wall, it seems. It, it's a harsh break between the two. And I, I don't see why it shouldn't all be brick. I, I, I kind of. In, in town, I don't like to see all the stucco showing up unless it really has some detail to it. And that just doesn't make sense to me not to run it, run it around the corner and down, down the. Alley, so to speak, between the buildings.
Okay, yeah. So you mean down this elevation?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, again, you will not have much of a view of this elevation because of our six foot high fence. Again, the grade is five feet higher than our floor, puts the top of the fence, I think at one fifteen. Our second floor is at one seventeen. So. With the landscaping, with the arborvities we're using on this, uh, property line, we have five feet. It is an alleyway. Um, the expense of doing the brick and then also the insulation value that we can gain with the cementitious, uh, material without thickening the wall too much.
I guess it still disturbs me no matter what.
Okay.
Any, any signage coming on the entry to this location?
Um, with our development, we're not trying to draw attention to this, um, entrance. So. At most, it will be lettering on the door itself, noting that is, this is the commercial lending department. And that all other public would go to the front entrance for the branch bank or the offices.
Just to let you know, this is in the overlay district. So. If you're going to put some signage even on the door, you, you're going to end up, you know, having to present it to the board.
Okay.
You mean the design review board?
Design review board, yeah.
Yeah. And John on the plan, any final plans? That we approve, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Jim, for that. Anyone else? Okay. Tom, you want to jump to the materials? I think that's where Brian asked you to.
Sure. Um, so I can start from the beginning. Actually, we put the whole material list, but I'll just kind of jump into what we have here. So in the existing images, you can see the brick facade they were trying to capture and then also the window. Presence that we're going to use in our second floor area. Um, so to match the brick, we had, um, consolidated go out to the site and they gave us a more in bit brick. So this is. The front elevation of the branch bank showing the, the character and the range of the brick is similar. Um, originally I thought the bricks were going to be off, but they actually do make, I think it's a. One and three eighths by the same dimensions of the brick that we have in the existing wall, they will make that brick also. Um, so you can see these are some of the ranges we have and we're looking more into, uh, the blackstone range or the college blend. And then for trim materials around windows, we'll be using Isaac materials, uh, for any of that flat trim pieces. Again, we're looking to utilize the slate roof that exists on eighty four linear feet of this roof. Um, which we feel will be able to match our front elevation on Chestnut Street and then transition into. Uh, the resin material that I was talking about. So this is a Brava Old World Slate. Uh, so again, these are basically a resin, a plastic, um. The Arundel and the light Arundel have that range of material when you're looking at the slate that exists right now. We would take a blend of that in order to accomplish that west elevation. Um, another thought we had, which I'm not presenting for this, but we would use also, um, an asphalt shingle that has a slate texture to it. Again, that's just the thickness of the material and they use a black outline around the squares in order to highlight the, make it similar to that slate material. And then the cementitious panel, um, this is a Nietzsche hall panel, which is basically a rain screen. So we're able to get. A better insulation, a cavity, a rain screen, um, in a thinner wall than we would have to do with the masonry, um, veneer. And then with our storefronts or openings, um, we're looking at. A heavy styling rail for the doors to mimic, uh, the wood doors that exist on the odd fellow building and then also. The branch building, uh, the branch building has a half light of on that elevation and then for the odd fellow building, they have a three quarter light. Um, we would go with just a full light door with a heavy style in the middle. And then for aluminum windows, again, we were talking about storefront system on that first floor area. Um, so these would be the two openings, but it's to the left of the main entry door. And then double hung windows for the second floor, um, above on the Chestnut Street side. And then we're looking to using awning style window. On the west elevation, um, on the first floor level, these would just be awning windows at a clear story height, about five feet above the floor. And on the second floor, they would mimic the sash over sash of the double hung window, uh, but be operable as an awning window. And those are the materials.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions, board members?
Um, I have one further question. Mechanically. Um, I assume there's something going on the roof eventually?
Oh, yes. So it creates a well, if I go back to, uh, drawings. So the sloped roof will create a well with a six foot high wall around the perimeter. Um, we are leaving an opening, this should be a three foot opening at the odd fellow building, allowing for, uh, overspill if, um. Any of the roof drains get clogged. Um, so all of these mechanical units will be screened from the street and the butter because of that six foot high wall.
Right.
And this is all E P, E P D M.
Yep, thank you.
And then what, Tom, what is the spec on these? Uh, do you have silence package on these units where? This is going to be pretty much at a level that's window level with your neighbor?
Not at this time. Um, again, we have a six foot high parapet wall around the whole perimeter of this wall, of this roof, I mean. So as far as sound isolation, I think it'll be contained. Um, I don't see it amplifying to the neighbors.
You do know that there is a bylaw that has a sound requirement at the lot line, right?
Yes, yep.
As long as you meet that.
We will review that.
Yeah. It, it might just be easier to put a, a by it with a sound attenuating package.
Yep.
I mean, we've historically seen cut sheets for that stuff too, and if they know them before they're. So, but at least some sort of. Determination that they'll meet that requirement, yeah. Okay. Okay. Anything else, board members?
Did we see the landscaping plan?
I've got Jim Emanuel here, so he's.
Okay, so when you say anything else, yes, let's see.
Yeah, I know.
No, I just, I, I, I might have missed something, Mr. Care. Been known to happen.
All right, okay, um. Jim, are you here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We did. Yep. Um. Jim, do you want to bring up the plan? Can you do that or you want me to?
Um, I believe I can. Okay, can we see the landscape plan now?
Yep.
So, uh, just to orient everyone, um, here we are on Chestnut Street. And this is the area, uh, that we focus the landscape. Uh, treatment on the doorway in this location. As we zoom in, we'll look at the, the front, you can see it, I think. Fairly well represented in the renderings. Um, we're doing a shrub border across the front line, Chestnut Street. These will be kind of low shrubs. Uh, so as not to block the windows. It's a mixture, uh, well, it's actually mostly evergreens across the front here with some, with some perennials that allow for some seasonal color. Uh, the main component. That's the ma, the big difference between the existing condition and proposed from a landscape perspective is. Uh, you can see these. Gray dots all represent locations of, uh, existing stand of Norway maples that have kind of. Uh, found their way into that location of the site. So we're proposing that we remove these Norway maples that are in. Various states of, uh, quality and, and, and some of them aren't helping. Some of them are really close together. Some have fork stems, I think in, in the, in the lawn, when they're just not great trees. Uh, for this location, for the new building and, and for the site. Nothing would be able to be planted or survived amidst them. So we've determined, um. To replace them on the adjacent lot. Uh, remove these trees and replace them with a stand of evergreens. And these are a mixture of, uh, arborvitie. A few different kinds of arborvitie, uh, emerald greens, pyramidal, uh, and. Blue, uh, junipers too. So we've got those going all the way back, these. blue junipers too. So we've got those going all the way back, these evergreens all the way back to the back lot line. Uh, and again, these are on the opposite side of the lot line on the budding lot. Uh, seven to eight foot is the general size that we're looking at on those. We're also proposing this line that you can see here with the, the square uh, and the line uh, segment is a, is a white composite picket fence. So uh, I think that was shown in the renderings. I'm a bit dizzy here, but something, something like this uh, at the six foot height that will provide an instant six foot barrier. And I think a, a much better sense of separation in the pedestrian scale on here than is currently existing with just Norway maples uh, that are there at the site right now. So we've got um, junipers and arborvitae's on a, on a line, along the lot line um, on the adjacent parcel five, five A Chestnut Street. Uh, and then a weeping cherry that we actually discussed would be a butter and that as, as a kind of punctuation ornamental tree on the endpoint here. It was a small retaining wall that keeps the gray back here beside alley. I think we've called it as, as um, covered in peystone and then various sizes of shrubs from um, different types of rhododendrons um, and some mountain laurels and andromedas and things that would grow and sort of live on the backside of a fence. These will eventually fill in and take up most of the space. Um, and they're predominantly or all more broadleafed evergreens in this area, uh, along the side as well too. Uh, and we have again, the evergreens across the front uh, that will be green year round with some, with some color uh, in that area. But it's really, uh, I think the main focus of this is really removing trees, replacing it with uh, the evergreens, putting up a fence. And then just doing a, a nice planting around the building uh, for some, some color and to make everything kind of look finished.
Jim?
Yes.
With the, with the fence, um, and that sort of what you described as an alleyway and the planting there, is that fat, I mean, how much light is that planting going to get in that alleyway? Given the fence in the building on either side? I mean, southern light for a while, but after, no eastern light and very little western light.
Yeah, that's, that's true. I think that we're fortunate to have, you know, sort of a almost direct southern exposure. So, so we're, I'll zoom out a little bit. I believe we've got the north indication here. So um, we, we don't, we won't get as these plants mature, they'll be decreasing amounts of light. But I think when it's initially put in, there's substantial enough light, probably six hours per day uh, for these types of plants, broadleafed evergreens like rhododendrons and mountain laurels, which are understory plants. Uh, they, they, I would anticipate would survive in these solar conditions. Um, we want to put something in there that would be substantial, that would be evergreen, um, somewhat ornamental and take some from the view of the building, uh, have some persistence. So it's, it's not looking out just onto a fence. Uh, over time, as the evergreens grow taller, there'll be perhaps less light that will get into the area. There is the six foot fence. But again, I think because of the solar orientation where we do have that, that uh, sun, the south facing uh, alley. I think we're, we're okay with the types of plants that we've selected for that location.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Chip? Perhaps?
Jim, I, I don't see the note on here, but I assume that the savings bank landscape areas are irrigated.
The savings bank areas will be lands, uh, will be, will be irrigated, irrigated. So we're, we'll, we'll do irrigation system on the property of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't ask you. I don't know if the other people have irrigation or not, but to me, that would be their issue.
Yeah, that'll be cool.
You're, you're doing the plantings. They can do the irrigation.
That, yes, in some way, I'm not sure how, what the details of that are at this point for irrigation on that side. But these plantings will be installed as part of this project on, on the bank property.
And we just want it noted on the plan as we always do. Irrigation will be provided.
Yes, well, that, that's true. Yes.
We could do that. Okay. Cause we, we believe you, but you know, stuff happens.
Oh, yeah.
People change. Projects change. Okay. Anything else on landscaping? I don't feel like we see, need to see some sort of colored elevation rendering of this area. Is this sufficient? Given the, the size and scope of, you know, what's being proposed. Sometimes we see other more full blown landscape plans, right? With some of the other projects and the multifamilies and so.
I mean, in, in reality, Mr. Chairman, we're not going to see the, the roadies and azaleas and, and mountain laurel that are down that, down between the building and the fence. You know, and what's, what's been presented for the little wall in front is fine.
Okay. I also want to highlight that, that we met with the town engineer. Um, and we've got some grading issues that we're going to be dealing with out here. So he, he's asked us to remove and replace the sidewalk uh, from uh, from the, down here all the way up. And with our relationship with the Abada, we, we've agreed to take it beyond his entry. So it doesn't, you know. So that's part of the, that's part of, that's why that's on the plan. I forgot to point that out. Yeah, we, I was going to note when we got to that point that, you know, we got correspondence, the letter actually just dated today, Brian. I don't know if we had a chance to see it. But it has, it mentions that plus some other comments, general comments, water, sewer drainage right away. So just have a look, I guess, as we normally do and follow up with the engineering department as needed. Um, I don't see anything. Make its way into a condition, but maybe just adjusting the plans accordingly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, concom had no further comments, not in the jurisdiction, the fire department. Um, you know, obviously extending what's, what's in the current building in terms of alarms, sprinklers and so forth, extending into the new building. Um, the detail being required. So during the raising of the existing building, so. But again, um, typical comments for, for project of this nature. So that's the correspondence we received from town boards. Anything else? Brian, from, from your team?
No. No, I think we've, I think we've, we've covered it all. But the only other thing is, as far as lighting goes, is, there's not going to be any lighting, except there might be something uh, just a light underneath the canopy on the entrance, like uh, that will just shine down. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct. We'll only be illuminating that entryway. Uh, no exterior lighting, uh, nothing on the alleyway.
All right, um. All right. Well, thank you for this presentation. I, I mean, there's a lot of me materially just covered. I do have a few notes, Brian. I assume you do too. So I see us continuing this. We're going to need some updates on a few things. In my mind, um, but before we entertain that, we can certainly open up to the public for any initial comments or questions. So we'll do that now. If any member of the public has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I'm allowed to entertain that at this time. Not seeing any hands. So we'll close with the public participation. Good evening. So I've got mechanicals, Brian, irrigation note and some signage perhaps. Was there something else?
I didn't have anything else.
Okay. Those, are those items that the board possibly could condition or? Well, I mean, are you looking to close this tonight? Is board members ready to move towards a vote possibly? Or are we thinking that we need any sort of comebacks with final plans? Do we need to see signage before we vote on something? Or do we just condition and say we retain jurisdiction? How do board members feel about proceeding here or continuing?
Well, they, he said the sign, the only sign that there would be would be a small sign on the door.
We intend to, we, we intend to comply with the sign by law through the design review board. Um, cause we're going to, we're going to just do lettering on the door and we're going to make it in a size that will meet the, meet the requirement. I mean, that's an option, right, Jim?
Yep.
And then on the other hand though, they said they would look at the um, sound by law for the mechanicals. Didn't sound like they had information on that. So whether they would meet it or not, didn't sound like they knew.
But, but in reality, that's a building issue more than it is, or they have to meet that.
True.
Can we condition the parking? Uh, these lease spaces that are all over town.
I, I kind of agree. I'm sorry. I kind of agree with that comment, Mike. That's my only concern. It's um, I guess we're in a little bit of a weird spot that they're very generous with their parking across the street. There's no doubt about that. But they are bringing a whole bunch of people into the downtown where parking is an issue. And Brian, I'm assuming your client doesn't want to build a garage associated with this.
They were willing to at one point.
But um, you know, I, i- it's kind of the, I, I, I believe in the, the current bank leadership, which does a lot of great things in town. And uh, I believe them if they're leasing these spaces across here. But ten years from now, twenty years from now, um, the building will still be there. They'll still have their employees there. Um, so i- i- it's something to think about. I don't know if I'd die on that hill, but um, it's my only minor concern with anything I've seen tonight, which is everything else has been very straightforward.
I was just thinking, if you sold it someday, there's, the new owner doesn't have to do any of that and won't probably.
Well, it's got to be a bank, uh, because the relief is pursuant to a bank. So um, and, and you know, I've talked to town council about that. And you know, right now, when you look at the parking situation downtown, even with their twenty-two spaces, which they are very generous with them because you know, you know, people park there to, to do their errands. Um, is the savings bank is generous with everything that they do in town. Um, you know, they, they have more parking than anybody downtown, probably except for Polanos um, or Alano's because they have that lot out back. Um, so and the other factor on them is, and, and this was discussed at town meeting, they're an anchor. You know, I mean, they're an anchor for downtown because so many people conduct business with them that they are such a benefit to all of the other businesses. Because when people go to bank, they shop and they pick up sandwiches or they go to, you know, Dollar Tree or they go, you know, or they go to one of the other stores or they, or they get a sandwich. So, so you know, I, I, and I think they've, they, Tom, have such a history of this isn't like they've been leasing spaces for like, uh, you know, this goes back to the, to the prior uh, leadership of the bank that this has been happening. And it just shows their commitment, not only to the town, but to their employees, that they want their employees to be able to park responsibly and be comfortable. Um, where they are. And, and, and I don't think it's a, um, um, Bob, could you maybe talk to the board about how many employees you anticipate bringing into this uh, that, that this will result in bringing downtown?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, um, there's a total of eighteen employees coming, but they're not all working every day. Uh, due to COVID, we, we've adopted a hybrid work schedule. So as Brian said earlier, I think the high was um, the high was fifty-two on a Monday. And then um, other than that, it's, it's below, below fifty. Um, in, in regard to those spaces that we've been leasing, we've been leasing at the McDonald's funeral home for years. Um, I, I, I don't know exactly how many, but it's got to be at least ten. And um, you know, we've leased the spaces from Jack Polano for, you know, probably a similar amount of time. The, the spaces from the Wakefield item, we have eight now. Um, I've spoken with uh, Mr. Dolbear there and um, and he's, he may have other spaces. And I told him that if he gets other spaces available, we'll take them. So the, the bank is committed to the, to the parking. I mean, we've been around for a hundred fifty-two years. Uh, we're not going anywhere. And um, you know, we, we just want to be a good corporate citizen. We try to keep our employees off the street and, and, and provide good parking for them.
I misunderstood that a little bit. So you only, you're only really bringing eighteen people maximum to the site.
Yeah. Again, that not every day, but because some of them are working hybrid schedules where they may work two days in the bank and three days out or vice versa. So it, it depends on the employee.
The other thing, Tom, is you know, this is not, you know, if you really look at the history of this free chestnut, this, it's not like vacant land. This has been a use that's, that, you know, hot sun impacted the parking downtown because they had employees. So it's kind of nothing new historically with, you know, with that property. It's not like we're taking vacant land and adding on to it.
That's a good point. Thank you.
No, I think it was, you know, I think it's a point well taken. If they were bringing certain number of employees downtown that aren't there today and they, these are parking arrangements were made with businesses that could conceivably change over time. And it, it creates a, a possible issue and they have to go find other sources, right? But I don't think the item McDonald's or Huntos going anywhere anytime soon. So perhaps it's not, not something that will have to be dealt with uh, in, in the short term anyway.
So on, on that though, is it just employees coming down or will it be customers coming to see these employees? I know, I think we said it's, you know, obviously HR, there won't be customers coming to see this or systems that won't be coming to see them. But I think we said there'll also be like some of the lending officers in there and stuff. Well, this.
There'll be some commercial lending officers, but most, most often they're going to visit the client rather than the client coming to them. I'm not going to say it won't ever happen, but you know, most of the time it's the loan officer visiting the client rather than vice versa.
And as long as the employees are off the street as they're committing to, it's really, the public would use available spaces around town as they would or across the street or.
Well, I guess Dave, that's the question. Are they committing to it? Where's, there's, I, I don't, I'm not trying to be antagonistic, but we have said they'll do, that, you know, this has been what it's the leases have historically been there, but we haven't said anything. You know, they said, oh, we, you know, probably will be there in the future. But again, what if this? What if this co, this building or this company does sell? And, and I know we say we're not going anywhere. My, my wife works for a company that was in Boston for over a hundred years too, and actually just sold to Morgan Stanley that no one saw coming to. So stuff like that does happen and this does run with the land. So it is something to think about. Whether we do condition, you know, just, and not anything particular, but the same number of spaces being available as, you know, available today, something along those lines. And, and I appreciate, um, you know, the how great citizens there are town. I do business with them too, but it's just knowing that this runs with the land is, is really where I'm coming from now that, you know.
This was a, if this was a restaurant or something else, we would allow them to have zero park.
Right.
Maybe. Historically, what we is we don't, we don't. I, I think we're, I, 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 I'll stop.
No, I was going to say the same thing, Chip, is that everybody downtown, we have to give, I mean, we don't have to, but we have to give them relief because there's nowhere to go.
Correct.
Right, and according to.
And we're saying, and we're busting on them.
Right.
Oh, busting on them. We're asking a question. I mean, I think we're allowed to ask questions if we're, if this is considered busting on them. And I guess we shouldn't ask the questions.
I'll, I'll voice my opinion. I have no problem with what they're doing with parking. I think we're beating it dead.
I agree.
You know, as far as the business not being there, you know, we're, we're a mutual community bank. We have no stockholders. So um, yeah, we're, we're not getting sold to anybody, so.
Understood. And I personally don't think we were beating it. Chip and Amy, um, they're asking for relief on the parking and they have fifty employees. Most of the restaurants and other businesses don't have that many employees. It's a valid question in my mind. We don't have to go any further with it.
That's why we all have opinions.
Specific relief, and I think they're valid questions. We're not beating on them. We're just making sure we're all on the same page and clarifying these things. So we just proceed. So anyone else have any comments or questions on what's been proposed? And whether they're comfortable proceeding to a vote, regular board members?
I'm comfortable.
Some outstanding items. There'd be some outstanding items we would have to either condition or get, you know, follow up through signage or whatever those updates might be. Yeah.
So where do we hang our hat with?
So where do we hang our hat with, with what Greg's brought up basically? Cause I sort of agree with him. Well, we don't have to commit where it is, but a, a number or quantity basically might be a good idea.
Well, if I can just add to this, if I, if I can just provide some information. So if, if you take the hot sun building, right? First of all, if you take 357 and 347 Main Street, which is driving this parking count, that's grandfathered. Okay. Because you know, the only thing that's triggering this is because we're, we're uniting all of the properties, right? So it's not like we're bringing 55. This is historically happened. So it, you know, we're just looking for relief to kind of clean this up zoning wise. But if you take the hot sun building is on its own, it's one level, which is what's the square footage, Tom, for our first story, like 2,800?
Yes, 2,800.
So, you know, so the hot sun building as it stands requires 11 spaces. Alls we're really seeking relief for is 11 spaces, the second story. If you really look at it, which is pretty reasonable when you factor in what most people get for relief downtown is Amy had mentioned, because there's certain restaurants that have required like, you know, more, probably more parking spaces than the savings bank that they, that have, they, you know, are afforded that relief. And, you know, it, it, it's just, it's not, nothing's an automatic, but you know, it's a reality of downtown that if you, if you don't give that relief, you're not going to have any businesses downtown. So it's really not the impact that it seems when, when you look at the, at the relief that's being requested. It's really an existing condition plus 11 spaces.
Okay. And again, when we've granted that variance before, it's typically down to zero. We said, we're not going to, you know, you, you don't have any and we're willing to bury that requirement down to zero.
And the other thing, I don't know realistically how you can condition that somebody's going to lease parking spaces. If they're not available, they can comply with, with, with the condition.
Right. This has come up on other projects and we, yep, we went down that road.
And they're very good too about keeping all those spaces out front for downtown customers. They'll notice if an employee is parked there and, and say something and have them move it. So they're leaving all those open for people.
All right. Regular voting board members, are you comfortable moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. Does someone want to start making motions? We need four of them.
Are we going to public?
We already did.
Did we? Once again, I missed it. I'd be happy to. We had so many other conversations. I didn't think we had done public yet. Okay. I'll give it a shot. If I screw up somewhere, somebody please correct me. Let's start first with a finding. So I move that we find pursuant to article 10, section 190-50B, that the proposed changes to any pre-existing non-conforming buildings, structures and uses are not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformities to the neighborhood.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? I would just add that we'll probably want to note the plans here that we were shown tonight for all of the.
Oh yeah. Okay.
L Y F architects, let's see. I don't know if somebody can come up with the dates quicker than me, but there's a few plans here we have. Yeah. Site plan, September 9th.
The site plan has a revision date, Mr. Chair.
Of what?
So the site plan is dated September 9th, revised October 7th, 2021. And Tom Gav, could you help us with the dates on your plans?
9/9/21.
9/9/21 is what I see on all these.
These are A, A, A1 through A.
Yeah, we don't have to list sheets. We're not listing sheets, Jim. Just the plans. We'll get those on the decision.
So I think they're dated 9/9/21 from L, L Y F architects.
And the site plan is noted and I, is that it?
Materials, landscape, and landscape plan is noted.
Materials, is there data on the materials package? Let's see one. And the material.
As presented in the package.
Sure. Okay. So just under discussion. So it's already been made and seconded, but under discussion.
We'll, we use those for, we'll use those for all going forward.
You've also, you've also got a civil plan too. Survey plan, I'm sorry.
Yeah. From Hayes. Yeah.
9/9/21.
Revised October 7th.
I don't know if we have that in our package, Brian. We'll need that.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, yeah. I'll get you the hard copy, but we, I submitted that on Friday.
Okay. Yeah. The hard copy didn't have it. Okay. Yeah. All right. Any other discussion on the motion on the finding?
Do I need to second the, that addition?
Of the plans?
Yeah. Okay. Second.
All right. On the amended motion with the, the plans noted. Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on the amended motion? Okay. Regular voting membership.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's unanimous.
So now we will go to the new special permit. So I move that we grant a special permit pursuant to article six, section 190-31L of the Wakefield zoning by law and site plan approval and conjunctions therewith to allow reductions and increases to the floor, FAR, maximum building coverage, minimum open area and front yard setback requirements of table two of the Wakefield zoning by law are shown on the site plan, site plan as we have been discussed. And the findings are as follows. The use requested in the listed, it is listed in the table of regulations as requiring a special permit in the district. The requested use is essential and desirable to the public convenience and welfare. And there is a dire need for businesses to keep growing in Wakefield. There's a, the use will not create or add undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The use will not overload any public water drainage or sewage system or any other municipal system for such an extent that the requested use or developed use of the immediate area or an area of town will be unduly subjected to hazards affected health, safety or general welfare. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district. We actually saw that it will maybe add to it as the Hawthorne House will go away and the addition will be more in tune with the front of it. The requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause any excess of the particular use or detriment to the said neighborhood. Again, will, will put a vacated and highlighted property to beneficial use. And then I think gee, the last thing is the reductions and or increases are supported by evidence of lack of suitable land and design consideration of similar factors. And the granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, welfare of the neighborhood of town. And with that, section 190F45, we also have site plan approval. So the board has reviewed the section of the bylaw, which is pertinent. Part states that in reviewing a site plan, the special permit granting authority, us and the other applicable agency shall consider among other things the following. One is the convenience and safety of the Hitler and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjusted streets, properties and improvements to the adequacy of methods of disposal for sewage refuse and other waste. Three, the provisions for off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to servicing of the building. And we considered all those criterias and we're satisfied that they are met.
That your motion?
That's my motion.
Is this where the conditions would come in, Chip, to fix some things?
So what are the conditions that we're looking at?
Well, you need to note on the, uh, uh, plan for irrigation. Right?
For a site plan approval. Okay.
Right.
Signage.
The signage, I don't think that has to be a condition because we're going to comply or, you know, or we'll come back to the board if we need a special permit for relief, separate sub special permit. I think we should have it. Is it, we retain jurisdiction should they want to change their sign plans in the future? Okay. As part of approving a special permit, I think we typically want to retain jurisdiction.
Okay.
Um, and then some sort of information. Well, you said, we don't need anything about the mechanicals, right? Cause they'll have to comply with noise. We won't submit sheets for it. They'll just have to comply. Okay.
Correct.
I think that was it. Just irrigation note and retaining jurisdiction and signage. I think we're.
So with those, with those two additions and for conditions, I, it is my motion.
Second.
On the amended motion. Thank you, Amy. Any discussion on the amended motion, board members? Okay. Same voting membership.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That too is unanimous. Okay. So now.
So the next permit is for the off-street parking. Um, and I just, before I make the motion, I just want to make sure, are we going to condition that somehow or not?
I don't know how we do.
I don't either.
Well, one of them is just, one of them is just saying that they're allowing parking off-site. And it is what it is, right?
Right. But that, there's a reduction, there's a reduction in the number as well.
And that's the, I, I don't think we can.
Okay.
We're just allowing it to be.
Yeah. No, I just want to make sure before I go.
Yeah.
Okay. So three, I think this is the third one, is a special permit pursuant to article seven, section 190-36C, reducing the requirements of the standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaws follows. One is a reduction in the number of required number of parking spaces under section 190-41, table three of the bylaw, reducing the required number of parking spaces to, to, to a total of 22 parking spaces. And any other necessary reductions in requirements or standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven of the bylaw related to the project as shown on the final site plan and final architectural plans as early to find. The findings were the same for the prior special permit. And we also find that the application of the standards for off-street parking and loading under article seven proves to be infeasible and the reductions are supported by evidence of infeasibility due to a lack of suitable land design consideration and other similar factors like no public garage in the downtown. So thus the granting of such a special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character or welfare of the neighborhood or district of the town. And that the board determined that the location of the structure will not restrict visibility in any such way as to hinder the safe entry or exit from a driveway on the streets or at the corner of two streets.
That your whole motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That too is unanimous.
And the last one is the special permit to allow parking on a lot by the same ownership. So special permit pursuant to article seven, section 190-37A to allow off-street parking areas to be provided on another lot in the same ownership as the principal use. That being 348, 350 Main Street, Wakefield, Mass. And the same special permit findings as previously stated.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's who's unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Brian?
Thank you.
Very much.
Everyone?
Thank you, board members.
All right. That is the last new hearing for the evening. We're now on to some other matters. We have a few of those. First one, I'm just going to go in order unless there's any request to, to otherwise. 19-40 to 40, 19-40 to 19-44, 168 Albion Street, NRP Group, discuss certificate of occupancy.
Uh, that is not going to go forward tonight. So Chair, we're not ready to do that because we're going to be probably back in two weeks on that, on a temporary certificate of occupancy. We're in discussions with the building inspector on now, but we're not ready to go forward.
Okay. Well, the next one on the list, 29, 21-29 to 21-31, M B A R Wakefield LLC at 500 Main Street, Santander Bank, discuss materials.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here on behalf of, uh, M, um, M B A R. That's Bob Santinelli who's on. And also our architect, Tom, Tom Chudina, uh, who is on and, and what we want to discuss with the board was, um, the, this is the new Santander Bank that Bob is building. They're in the process of, of starting construction and, and with some of the shortages of supplies, they're having difficulty on, uh, a, a specific material that was specified in the architectural plans. That they're not sure if and when they're going to be able to get it. And we're looking to replace that material. So with that said, I'm going to, um, I'm go, going to, um, share my screen if I could bring up the plan. And Tom, are you there?
I'm here, Brian. Can you hear me?
Great. Yeah, we can. So I've got the plan on the screen, Tom. Do you want to kind of explain to the board what's, what, what's going on here?
Um, sure. So there's, uh, there's metal panel or what was originally identified as metal panel. Um, it is shown on these plans indicated as, um, item number three and number four, which is the band that runs along the top from, yep, right. Well, that's the column line, but yeah, along there, Brian, and then down. Uh, and then.
Yeah.
Right here, Tom. Yep, that's it. Yep. Go across to the right and then it goes all the way to the end and then down to the bottom. And that was, that was all metal panel, um, as was the lower section towards the front side. Yes. Yep. Along the, so that's the top piece. And then there's a, a lower roof. Now that's.
Right here, Tom. Right here.
That's correct. Yep. So those were both gray, um, metal panel. One was a little darker than the other. And the proposal or the request is to change those to an EFS, which is certainly more readily available. Um, the bank actually has, has that as an alternate material in their design book that they, that they use. Um, so they were, they had no issue with the change and understood the, the reasoning behind it. Um, that's, that's really it. That's those, that's the change. It's just the gray metal. The red that you saw in the renderings, which is kind of gray on this, that would stay the same. Yeah. That, that's actually a product that's provided by their sign vendor. So that, that's a custom material that they keep in stock because they, they use it on, on all their buildings. Um, so that is available. That's not going to change. And they, they've found that trying to do a red EFS doesn't work. It just fades too quickly. Um, but the grays are, are kind of neutral colors and have, have, have been swapped out successfully. Reveals would be the same as the metal panels. The appearance would be nearly identical. Just, uh, it'd be, uh, it's just a little different material texture.
And, and you know, uh, Bob, you know, Bob, as you know, Bob's been before the board a number of times and, and Bob has, you know, we, we understand and respect, you know, decisions like this aren't easy for the board. So Bob has, has materials if the board would like. We, we understand and respect, you know, decisions like this aren't easy for the board, so Bob has, has materials, if the board would like to. Like to have those dropped off so you can see them and touch them and feel them, we can do that. If you feel that's necessary, um, is that correct, Bob?
Yes, Brian, that's correct, we'll get them over to Town Hall. Building Inspector Office or wherever they want tomorrow morning.
You don't have a picture of it?
Uh, Tom, do you have any pictures of it? We just didn't have a chance to uh. We could have brought it this afternoon, but we thought no one would get over there and look at it, so.
So what is it for those of us who might not be well, totally versed in materials and names and? So what was, it was a metal panel, what, aluminum? What was it before? And what is it supposed to be?
It, it was a, a um, ACM, like a, a aluminum composite metal panel. And now it's, it's being swapped out for a, a smooth textured EFS, which is an exterior insulated finish system, it's a synthetic stucco basically.
So the question, the question I have is, is it a particular manufacturer for metal panel that you can't find? Or any metal panel? Bob, you want to?
Of course, the stone material, it's much more readily available, Chip.
Yeah, that's not the question I have.
And we're not going to get held up.
So Chip wants to know.
Is it a specific manufacturer? Or just all metal panels in general?
It's, it's the timing, the timing of, of getting it, getting the product when they can actually produce it and when the contractor actually needs it. Um, this is.
And what is that timing?
Uh, I don't know the specifics, but it's not, it's not something they can, they can order now, they have to measure for it and then it has to be fabricated and. It's just the timing's not working.
I guess I need to know more about that. Just quote-unquote, "timing's not working." I, I, it's not making sense to me.
Well, the material itself is same color. Minor adjustment on the um. The uh.
It's a, it's a big difference, a metal panel versus a stucco.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a huge difference in material.
I quite frankly, agree with you and I'm not for it. Uh, to Dave's question as to what's this material look like? It's the same one that you, was used at Dollar Tree, basically, is what it is. It might be a smoother surface and less, and less um. Less knobby, basically, but. You know, at Dollar Tree, it formed a lot of detail, basically, in doing it and it came out a good job, but. I, I don't see it used on this building, quite frankly.
No, this building has a much more modern look and feel to it, so they, it, that's what that metal is, the stucco is not gonna. It's not gonna work.
Wait, we'll just keep.
You got, you got Bennett Street with metal panels, you've got the school with metal panels. Basically, you know, it sort of mimics what's around it and you're absolutely right, Amy. It's, it's a modern, it's a modern building, basically, which was shown to us with a metal panel and not stucco. And uh, to Chip's point, basically, there are metal, there are different metal panel systems out there, a whole bunch of them, basically. And even so, you still have to measure them or do proper measurement, basically, in engineering and architecture, basically. To make sure the product arrives on site at the right size.
I would just say, um. Take a look at the materials and see, you see material difference in them. It's the same color and basically uh, the same texture on the outside. Tom, is there much of a difference in the texture? I know the colors for more.
Yeah, like I said, this is, this is a common swap for, for this bank and we've done others similar that. Uh, where we've used the EFS.
Is it textured or is it smooth like the metal panels were going to be?
Well, it's, it's obviously, it can't be as smooth as the metal, metal panels.
But if you guys had, if you guys had a metal panel. Next to. The EFS, the stucco. You'd see how much of a dramatic difference it is. I mean, the, the fact that it's the same color? Yeah, I agree. The fact that it's a, I, it doesn't matter how smooth it is, it's, it's different than metal. And the only way you could kind of understand it or compare it. Is to have a piece of metal panel versus the EFS. To just look at the EFS isn't going to give you. The, the differential.
There's a different reflectivity between the two as well.
I can tell you right now, I'm not in favor.
Result or a bad result, the reflection on it. Might find your reflection is a negative result. Uh, Tom, can you get a panel and when we, uh, we put them side by side, if they like to come and look at them?
Yeah, I have samples of both, the EFS and the panels.
Okay.
Can we at least drop them off and have you take a look and then maybe reconvene and?
I mean, would you, would you consider um. The Nietzscheha panels or the um, or, or, you know, cementis, a cement type board instead? That can, can provide a smoother. Finish as well and it can also be done with the same reveals.
Not for me.
Not for me.
I, I have a hard time that you can't get metal panels. I, I don't understand it, there's buildings being built all over Massachusetts with metal panels.
Not that we can't get it, it's that we can't get it in time to turn the bank, to turn the, the bank over. The building over to the bank in time.
That's not our problem.
I, I still find that hard to believe.
But if we don't even have a timeline of when you would need it, I don't, I'm confused by that too.
Well, Tom, maybe just um. Elaborate with the illustration of the safe, the vault. We don't know when that's coming for sure either, and that's going to affect the timeline.
Right, I.
You know, the pandemic has affected everything.
I know.
Everything in the supply chain.
Yep.
Yeah.
What are other reasons you said that this is a common swap out for this bank? Why, why are they swapping it out?
It's an alternate, it's an alternate material within their brochure materials that they can select from, that's all.
Correct.
When I hear swap out, I feel like it's the same thing we're dealing with, is that this is what was shown and then. Later on, they're asking for minor mods to put something else there in its place. Is there a reason behind that?
Yeah, we're trying to get the building built in six months and turn it over.
You'll be able to get a metal panel.
No words. Your words to the town engineer, please, Chip.
That's life. You, you presented a building, build the building, it's pretty easy thing.
And we're dealing with uh. You know, um. Environmental stuff and we're dealing with uh. Culverts on the land and so forth and we're, we're assessing all of them. This is just one more. And we're trying to eliminate.
I think you're hearing a lot of pushback from the board, Bob. Yeah, I think the concern is, is they've got to order these panels. And they don't know when they're going to get them. So that's, you know, EFS, they know they can get, they don't know when these are coming in, that's the problem. Could be a year. You know, so this, this building, and, and once they order them. Now they're being specially built and there are a lot of money. So, so it's not like we can come back to the board in four months.
Put painted plywood in this place till they come in.
You know.
I don't know if you can do that for the uh.
There's ways to do it, Brian, trust me. They got all, they, the building has to be up and measured, this is like a, a metal roofing pan. That has to be, have stuff measured once it's up so that they can come in exact. So I don't, I don't quite understand the, not knowing that they're going to get them in time.
Well, the other part of it is, if your drawings are accurate or not, like anything, like steel framing or anything, basically, you designed what's on the drawings. You're not designing to what you construct out there, you've got a full set of drawings here, which the builder is supposed to be building to. And you can also build in slots, basically, where you can have some freeboard, basically. If you need to, but I agree with you, Chip, if they had to, maybe they just put some plywood until they get the damn stuff and paint it.
But then we get the building that was presented.
Yeah.
Right.
There's a lot of moving parts, that's all, because you know, we, we, we respect that, you know, but, but, you know, Bob has an obligation to deliver a product to the bank. And, you know, there's provisions in his lease, if he doesn't deliver it as it's supposed to be, then, you know, he might not get paid, while he's waiting for the panels to show up. So, you know, that's, that, because that's, that's the other end, you know, we've got a, we've got a national tenant and, and, you know, they're, they're having a grand opening to their customers, they don't want plywood up. That's, that's, that's.
Construction.
That's what we're facing.
Construction and documentation are nothing but moving parts, basically, that's what you get a good contractor for and a good super.
But that has nothing to do with materials, Jim.
It has everything to do with materials.
This is the COVID world we live in. Yeah, people are stocking up on toilet paper again.
Let alone metal panels.
See how expensive toilet paper is now?
So, it's the world we live in, but. I think you're hearing the answer is no, from the board, I don't know how much more we want to beat this one. Do your best. Board members? Yes, no?
I've said my piece.
Yeah, I've got nothing else.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the EFS myself, if they use it someplace else and, and, and they use it at the other bags, I'm fine with it, but if you guys don't want to do it, you want to go with the metal panel. That's my two cents.
Not being a builder, I need to see the two anyway, so I don't have. I don't have any way in here.
Me, Bob, if you want to, if you want to drop them off and folks can, that aren't familiar, can take a look, but I, at, at this time, I'm. I think the answer is. I mean, you know, Bob, are you there still?
Yes.
Is it, I mean, can we at least drop them off and have you take a look and then, you know, if you still know after you see it, um.
I'll look at it, but don't, don't hold out any hope.
Okay, doesn't hurt to look, right, Bob?
No, I'll go by. I don't think it hurts at all, I mean, it's uh. It's this, it's the same kind of exterior, it's the same color, it's the same grade finish, uh, it's one material versus another material. That is not, to me, uh, a material change, but uh, you folks obviously think differently.
Well, let them look at it and then we can reconvene in a couple of weeks. And mind you, we get these requests on just about every project, Bob. We approve something and then people are coming back asking for modifications. It gets a little tiresome.
Yeah, well, this is a standard change for the bank, I mean, we could have submitted it with the EFS. Uh, if we known the availability of metals in the beginning. And uh, it, it probably would have flown through then, there'd be no coming back for it, but uh. We weren't, uh, didn't have enough forecasting ability.
Well, and we're not going to accomplish anything tonight, Bob, so why don't we drop off the samples and then we can come back?
Okay.
All right, you, you, I think what the board is saying is that they're not inclined to do it, but they're willing to take a look, but don't be too optimistic and. Um, uh, but I think in order for them to take a look, they need to see a metal panel versus that, so they need a sample of the metal panel too.
Right, we have that, right, Tom?
He said earlier that he did.
I do, I do have it, I'll have to. I, I don't know if I'll, I have to, I don't know if I can get it to you tomorrow, I had all the other materials for tomorrow. So I'll have to. Yeah, get them up there, but.
Okay, we'll get it to, we'll get it together within the next couple of days.
And she'll let us know, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Okay, next other matter. Twenty-one dash sixteen, one oh one Cedar Street. Micah Cannonistro. Canestro, sorry, kind of star, getting late. Um, discussing some alternative materials.
I'm, I'm uh. Here with uh, Micah tonight, Mr. Chair, to try to. Um, present this, um, I know he was here before. And um, based on the discussion uh, of the board at the, the last time, uh, he's made some revisions. And really kind of clarified and narrow, narrowed down what, what we're looking for. Um, so I'm going to um. If I may, I'm going to, I'm going to bring that up. We just. So this is at one oh one Cedar Street, Micah, you're on, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great, so I'm going to, I'm going to kind of take the ball and, and, and walk through this, so, so I, I think um. What, what we're proposing uh, is minor modifications or requesting is, is the first one, it's a change in the stone. And what was approved was called the Southern Ledge Stone. And um, Micah would like to change this to granite, American granite, my, my, when I asked him why. Um, when we talked uh, about this, he said, because it's a better product. Um, he didn't realize it, he thought that the ledge stone is a cheap, a chinty-rous product and the granite would be a better product. Um, and he didn't fully understand it, uh, so this is really the opposite of saving money, he's going to spend more money. Um, but he thinks it's a better product for the building in the long run. Where is this on the building again? Micah?
Yeah, it's, it's on the Cedar Street side, so if you go to the next slide, Brian, it'll be probably easier to explain. So it'll be about halfway up the doorway, so when you're on the Cedar Street side, you'll really see the, the front face of the. Um, of the, of the building and, you know, I think it'll be a nice accent uh, from the Cedar Street side, and it'll also be in the. Unit one entrance, so there's a, there's a basement entrance, um, where it'll be kind of, again, up to the, up to the door level. About, about where the doorknob is, straight across the front on the Cedar Street side and. Unit, unit one, it'll be uh, at, at the lower level, up to the, basically up to the doorknob. That'll nice, have a nice face from the Cedar Street side.
I'm sorry, but I'm not understanding that, looking at this picture where that is, I know it's the front elevation. But maybe with your cursor or something, you could tell me where it is and.
I don't have the cursor, but Brian, maybe you could uh, point it underneath the uh, underneath the, the front deck.
Right here. Right here, hold on. Ready, Micah?
Um, I'm having trouble seeing your cursor as well.
Well, here it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, right there, you got it.
Right here, Tom.
That's going to be right there.
Thank you. So it's showing as a foundation?
It, it, basically, it's not, um, it's above where the foundation is, but it's, it's basically uh. Now about midway up that wall. As, as it's, you know, typical in that, in the, in the Wakefield neighborhoods that I've seen.
So this shows, this shows clapboards or, or shingles or whatever. And you're saying it goes up to about the doorknob height?
Yeah, that, that's not going to be the, that, yeah, what, what you see there is um, from the. Architect, that's, but the actual rendering, and we can, we'll get into the materials in a couple of slides, so you'll see what the materials will be. Which have often been dropped off of the town, um, but it'll be, it'll be siding, won't be, won't be shingles, he just didn't have the ability to, as he was preparing the elevations, put them. But shingling is uh. Is a siding.
Mike, I think what the board is saying is they're confused where this is going to be because this elevation shows all shingles on the house, that's the question mark. See where my cursor is?
Yeah.
We have, so we have what we approved, the picture of what we approved.
Yeah, that's on the right-hand side. But that's the only, that's the only rendering that we have.
So the, the question that the board has is, this elevation here shows as shingles, but you're saying that some of this is going to be the granite?
Yes, yeah, and you have the right area, Brian, it was, it was midway, right, but basically where that door handle is. Yes, yeah, and you have the right area, Brian. It was it was midway, right? But basically where that door handle is and down.
So it's it's right here.
Yes.
Right in this area.
Yeah.
And that was always that that was originally spec to be the southern ledge. It's not like you're changing it from shingle to granite.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, correct. There was always going to be a stone on the property in that location. It's just modifying the stone to a better quality.
So that's one. The second, the second thing that we're requesting is because of the unit layout is 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 you can see what was proposed here. It was a sliding door up above. With with a with a de- a usable deck on the front, okay? And what he's looking to do is to modify that to include a door to provide a proper floor, another door to provide a proper floor plan for one of the units. Get rid of the railing up up top and put a bay window instead of the door.
The the door just looks, I mean, normally when you have. Two entrances, they look the same as opposed to something that looks like somebody's back door sitting next to the front door. Why isn't the doorway matching? Why shouldn't it have side lights and alike and be? You know, be a front door as opposed to some back doorway. It just, it doesn't look right.
Micah?
I I I mean, um, I I I think it's pretty common to have the main entrances on the on the front side of the property.
It's it's not about the, it's not about the main entrance being on the front. And my my concern is, is the two of them look. Entirely different, like one's just, I don't know, a closet door or something. It just doesn't walk down the street and look at any place that has two doorways on the front.
What Jim is saying, Micah, this door has two side lights. The windows above, and this door is just a basic plain door. Why aren't they the same?
Yeah, there's. Yeah, and and those will those will be the same. I I don't know why the the architect put that on there. I uh, you know, I can assure you that they'll they'll match. It's there's supposed to be two main entrances. This isn't. A back entrance to one unit. These are the two primary entrances to both to both units. Sorry about the background noise.
Well, what we're gonna do, what we've got to see what what the board requires and and we're gonna take notes here. So if the board's open to this, we're gonna have to revise these and come back to make them proper. So so.
Make them be what you're actually gonna build.
Yeah, and I understand that. I've done this plenty of times. So you know, I'm taking my notes as we're going along here. So so if that is documented properly. Does the board have any issue with this change? If they both have.
And if you're redoing this elevation, Brian, you also have to need to know where the stone's going.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, I I I understand Tom Lucy's point on that, that it's not documented here. So, yeah.
I don't have an issue with the railing disappearing, but I do have an issue and the bay showing up, but I do have an issue with the entry doorway, the way it's handled. And I agree with Chip basically, and let's show clearly the delineation between shingles and stonework.
Well, he actually said it's clavards, not even shingles.
So Jim, Jim, it it do you think two front doors can work if they're done appropriately, design-wise?
Yes, yes, I do, but I would not, I would not make that front door. Um, that, you know, like some back door, basically. I wouldn't want to see those in both locations either. There's a little. There's a lot more trim that needs to be representative of two apartments.
Understand.
Look like the front door and the rear door on the front porch.
Okay.
Taken, please.
What what Dave?
Yeah. Go ahead, keep going, please.
But I I understand. I'm just trying to narrow this. So we'll work with Jim on that issue. So I understand. I understand all of the issues on this front elevation now.
Is everyone okay with changing the door balcony to just a bay window? Because there's really two aspects being proposed here.
What does the original house have? I can't remember.
Yeah, it looks exactly like this minus the additional door.
Well, look to the photo on the right. It shows basically what appears to be a sliding glass door coming out onto a deck.
No, no, that's what that's what was being proposed.
Right.
I'm saying what what's the existing house look like? I think the existing house has a bay window, right?
That's right. It looks exactly the same. It just doesn't have that second door as an entrance. It was a shared hallway before, um, but we want to separate it. So there's not the common. Uh, common hallways for the for the tenants.
All right, Chip, it looks like it looks like the the elevation here. But it doesn't have two doors. Answer your question.
I'm sorry, I missed that last question.
No, I've answered it. We're good. But I'm gonna just make it simple for the board. Hold on. There we go. So there it is. You 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 can't kind of see through the trees, but you can see the bay window up there, Chip.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that's what was existing.
Yeah. And maybe I get a better shot at it if I come out on an angle. There you go. So basically, it it is the same.
Yeah, we're going right back to where it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next item. Okay. All right, then, um. This is, I think this is pretty straightforward. Um, what 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 we're looking to do here is is. We're looking to, let me just get this like uh, out of the way. We're getting rid of this. We're getting rid of this doorway, okay? And what he wants to do is is to just get rid of one of the windows. And that's due to interior layout. So you know, I think it's it's actually good that you're getting rid of an entrance here more, you know, less impact on the on the neighbor and you get, you know, less view on the window.
Well, that entrance is going to the front of the house, right?
Correct.
Is there a second way of egress for that?
Yeah, there's a there's a there's a there's an exit out back, Amy.
Okay.
You're gonna, you're gonna. On the side, you'll see it coming up.
Okay.
Are you going from four to three?
Oh, no, same staying for Mike. Just just different, different. Little elevation changes, that's all. We're not change, we're not reducing units.
No, I'm sorry, the windows.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, we're going from four to three. Right, Micah? In that area, we're going from four to three windows.
Um, yeah, I think there's actually, there might be another elevation that shows it more clearly.
Okay.
The rendering as an image.
Yeah. So this is the approved back of the building. Okay, and what's happening here is this this back staircase is coming off. We're proposing a bay window. Okay. We're getting rid of the window here. We want to put a bay window up top. There's not going to be a door anymore going out to that deck, no access out to that deck. And. To the two windows down here stay. But there's going to be a door here coming out for the the lower level unit. So you can see those comparisons. Any questions on that?
Brian, what are all these new bay windows made out of?
I don't know the answer. Micah, can you help with that, please?
I I don't think we've selected a the type of bay window, but I'd be I'd be glad to circle back with with the type of um. Type of window it's going to be. It's gonna be.
Want to spec, Chip? Chip, do you want to spec?
Yeah, well, let's go through everything and.
Okay. All right. So this is, this is this, if you face the house, this is on the right hand side, not the driveway side. Okay. So these windows. Were coming out, they're still coming out, all right? So not those haven't changed. And the and so let me just shift this over. So you can see it. These windows stay the same. Looking to put in windows for the lower level unit. Below.
Yeah, and just something I want to I want to add, Brian, if you don't mind. There's actually windows on that uh, loader unit already. For some reason, um, the 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 first architect I was working with didn't have them in the plans that were approved. So it's not, it's not really adding um, additional windows. One lit window is going to be enlarged as a second means of egress. But there's always been two units on that lower unit there where the arrows are pointing.
Yeah, so the difference is this is the approved plan over here. It's not the existing conditions. The existing conditions already have lower windows. We we really want to keep them or revise them. So it's a change from what's approved, but really not a change from what's out in the field now.
Also, a change to the upper windows there, too, right?
Um, let me see, Dave, hold on. I'm sorry, I keep moving that on you.
Well, it's like. Right above that left hand green arrow, that's a double window now from other window.
That's right.
So there's a different window configuration just between those, right?
That's right. We shifted all a little bit, yeah. So like there were like three windows here. Now it now here's your here's your window configuration.
And why are we doing that?
Interior layout, where where a bathroom might be. Smaller window.
That that, yeah, that's right. Where where the larger window is now, it used to be a bathroom. So it was a small window and now it's a bedroom.
And that's that, you know, then we had talked about, um, you know, um, doing hottie plant. We wanted vinyl siding. We're just gonna stick with a hottie plank. Um. Mike is fine with that. So. You know, just a we're we're looking for more of a uh, weatherproof. Ben, instead of something that's probably going to just kind of deteriorate over time, that was wood. That was spec before. Then, you know, I I can come back to this, but I just want to kind of show you that what we've. What we've done, because this this will probably be helpful, too. We went back to Jimmy Emanuel. And we've revised the. Landscaping plan. So now this this walkway is changed to accommodate if we have a double door to widen it a little bit with the staircase. This has been, this area has been re-landscaped because the doors, the door and entryway are going away here. So we think for the neighbor, it's going to make a cleaner, better look. Uh, for the butter who's been uh, very friendly to this project, who I think, by the way, is on the call. Uh, tonight, he's kind enough to stay on until eleven o'clock. Um. And then some modifications back here, because now this is the, this is a steel well going down for that door that we showed you on the back coming up, but you're not going to have anything coming off the back anymore. Uh, there was a railing, there's a railing proposed up on this level. That Michael was taking off, but I, you know, there's not going to be access out there anymore, but we're happy to keep it on, right, Mike? I mean, for an aesthetic thing, if the board wants that.
Yeah, it's it's important to the board. I know it's something that I originally uh, had suggested. I thought it looked nice, just um. Trying to get a sense of of what we couldn't couldn't do, could and couldn't do the last time I was on the meeting. So. Um, yeah, that's that's not a not a problem. That's what everyone still prefers.
But I think the landscaping plans actually are going to be better, um, because you're not going to have any interruption with the staircase and door. In that area. But it has been revised.
We got that. It wasn't the railing on the back, too, sort of consistent with the railing on the front. They sort of were similar styles and they tied together.
That's right. Yeah, they're gonna match the front deck and that and that uh. Uh, that addition railing on the roof, if you still want to do that.
No, but if if the front's going away, then.
I think, Dave, would.
Oh, right.
Dave, when that was discussed, I think it was some concern that people will use that doorway and go out on the roof, no matter what everybody was saying at the time. No, it's not going to happen. It's going to be locked. All of that. So the doorway has gone away. I can see the railing going away.
As long as the door went away. You know?
So at the end of the day, it needs to be detect depicted appropriately because it's not now, but we're we're looking to show a change in the in the stone. Um, which will be corrected on the plan to delineate where it's going to be. Um, we're we're looking to change the uh, to add a front door, get rid of the sliding door up front, which I think is an improvement to the properties, having a slider on the front of a house. Um, and put the bay, keep the bay window, which is consistent.
And I think we need to, Brian, I think we need to see specs on the entry doors and the bay windows.
Yeah.
Right, what's what's going in? Are they? Nice doors and windows or are they cheap?
Understand.
Yeah. Yeah. They should be nice. It's a nice old colonial house. They should have not really grand entrances, but nice front doors.
And then we're getting rid of a side entrance, which I think is a benefit. Then we're just really moving around windows and fixing the landscape.
Well, I think the elevation need to be updated. They show nothing but clapboards on the whole building. So. The architects basically provided a a a common fill mechanism, basically, that shows. Clapboards all the way around, shingles all the way around, when in fact.
It's gonna be clapboard.
Well, they got, they the original basically had a a board and baton system in one section, had clapboards in another section, and had shingles in another section. And right now, it the the elevation show nothing but clapboards. I mean, uh, shingles, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. It doesn't have any of the trim.
It it doesn't, it doesn't show us. And I I'm, you know, where we keep on going around in circles here. I'm at the point where those elevations got to show what the hell is going to happen on every face of this building. And at this point, it doesn't show all of that and it's confusing. Clean them up.
Got it.
And just comparing this to the last presentation. Which the volume and nature of the changes. The board was very concerned about, I I would dare say. What has changed? The only thing that it looks like you've. Taken off the table, if you will, is the vinyl siding, the siding changes. Right? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Siding. Go ahead.
One at a time, please. Let the applicant answer. Go ahead, Micah.
Yeah, yeah, it was the um, the stone, which I was asked to come back and um, have an accurate stone that I am I'm actually going to put in the building. So we actually located that that type of material. Um, it was the railings, which I'm, you know, um, agreeing would look nice. And if if it pleases the the board and. And the neighbors, and I'm glad to put those back on. Um. It was the landscape plans that were asked to revise and just make sure it it looks like a a a clean, um, attractive property. Cleaning up the areas where we're removing stairwells. Um, I, and the materials I felt like was the the biggest uh, sticking point from the last call. And we dropped off some some materials as as requested, but. You know, if if uh, the board doesn't feel that those materials are appropriate. You know, hardy board is really nice, too, and um, I'd agree to that. So I I think that was. I think really the only thing we haven't changed is the stairwells, which are actually really important because it affects the interior layout. Some of these units are only eight hundred square feet, so. To have two entrances um, in each unit, it makes for. Makes for uh, different difficult placement of furniture and so forth. So hopefully that answers your question.
Well, sort sort of, I mean.
Well, sort, sort of, I mean. You presented a multi-page PowerPoint presentation with a lot of proposed changes last time. And the volume and nature of some of those were a concern. Right? So, and even the new package we got tonight still have the, the siding changes, right? Brian, you just said those are off the table.
We're gonna revise that, yeah, I, I had a discussion with Micah today on that, so, so this package needs to be revised. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna do that. And we're gonna get rid, we're gonna get rid of that, so it's not confusing, we're gonna clean up the architectural elevations as discussed. And get specifications on the, the, um, the, um, windows and doors, and, um. We're going to. Run by Mr. McBane, what we're considering on the front doors to make sure that it works.
If he so chooses to welcome that challenge.
So Dave, can I?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
To say, to even be more, even be more blunt. Dave, I think would be a diplomatic, do we even consider this a minor modification versus regular modification? It's really what we're going with, volume of changes, whether we're okay with the changes or not.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, this is, we had a conversation, I don't, no, definitely wasn't you, Brian, so you might have even dropped off. Last meeting, I believe, about, there was movement of windows, I think we all got comfortable, it was a minor modification, but it was just movement of windows. We had a discussion about it. This is. You know, like Dave said, multi-page PowerPoint presentation. Materials and adding doors and removing. Replacing doors with windows. Whether we think the modifications are okay in the end, but procedurally is a minor or a full modification. That needs to be noticed.
I know what our town council would say. I'm pretty sure I know what he would say if he were on this meeting right now, but I don't wanna speak for him. Um.
It's getting pretty close to a regular modification.
It's pretty close, to having to file and, and take these on as, as regular modifications, Brian. Um, that's, that's where I was going, great, um. Cuz really, the only change is from last time was taking off the vinyl siding, which I think everyone was like, whoa, no way, no way. That's a totally different project, um. But what we're left with is still, yeah, several changes, and collectively, individually, you could probably argue. This one thing would be minor, this one thing would be minor, but now we've still got. You know, fifteen changes on the building, on the site, from the shed to the doors to the windows. To the stone. Do folks, are folks comfortable with this being even considered minor collectively? I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure I can go there, Brian, to be honest with you. Doesn't mean. The board may not ultimately. Agree that these changes make sense in some fashion, but it's procedurally whether this really is a set of minor modifications. Given what we approved.
I, I think every one of them is a minor, but you put them all together, then it's a whole different story. You know?
Well, I, I guess what, what I look at, Dave, is, is half the thing I'm struggling with is. Kind of presentation. Right, last time we had a very haphazard presentation. And even tonight, we kind of have a haphazard presentation. If we had had a clean presentation that said, I'm moving the front door. I'm taking away, I'm, I'm leaving the existing. Window, and here's what it's gonna be, and, and I, I just think if the presentation had been better. Then maybe we wouldn't, but I, you know, and then I go to, will we appro, even if we make them refile. Is there anything on here that? Changes. The entire project, and not really. You know, like, I, I think Joe put it best, and others put it best, that each one of these things individually is pretty minor. When you put them all together, they probably become major, but to me, it's just been the presentation has been haphazard and crazy. I still don't know what we're doing.
Right, visually, we still don't really see what we're getting, even if we were to approve these, right? Which is why they have already agreed to go update elevations, cut sheets on the doors and windows, etc. Right? So that we can see, it, it's helpful to have the updated landscape. Uh, for sure. Um, but I think.
Right, the updated landscape is the one thing we know that can get built. Right, and I was Ben trying to figure out what was, what I was supposed to be looking at, I wouldn't have a clue.
Well, maybe what we need to do is, is take another shot at the presentation, and that's gonna allow the board to evaluate, you know. Because it's so ha, it's so scattered at this point, it's almost hard to evaluate, I, I, I understand where the board's coming from. Um, so. You're probably not in a position to make that determination on what, whether, what, whether you think it's minor or major, until you actually see a proper presentation.
Yep. I would agree with that.
So I, I would, I would be quite, Michael, we've gotta kinda work together here with your architect.
Yeah.
You and I.
Yeah.
I mean, so we're having a quick, can't, we haven't, we're fortunate to have a candid conversation with your board and your architect's not on the meeting tonight, right? He's not here tonight, right?
Say you want, do I have my, yeah, no, he's not here tonight, but.
He didn't do a good job here, yeah, he didn't do a good job, you know, and I'm acknowledging that. We, we, you, we need to work hand in hand with him to spoon, he, he, spoon, I need to deal with him and tell him what he needs to do. I, I really shouldn't blame him, like, he hasn't had the opportunity to talk to me, so, so you and I should get on the phone with him tomorrow, and I can tell him exactly what we need.
Yeah, nope, no problem, we can, we can arrange that.
What we originally approved, Brian.
Yeah, I understand, Chip, I know exactly what needs to be done.
You know what needs to happen.
Yeah, I do.
Happen.
Yeah, alright, I do.
Alright, sounds good. Alright, so two weeks enough, you wanna go?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah, and it's, you know, that, that's fine, and.
Alright, it's under other matters, I don't think we have to formally just come back when you're ready, but we'll get it on the agenda for the next time.
Yeah, and Mike, I'll call you in a minute when we get off this, but we don't, we don't need to waste the board's time.
Alright, no problem.
Alright.
Have a good night.
Thank you, have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, Brian, I think that's it for you this evening.
It is.
Thank you. Have a good night, alright. Okay, our next other matter, our final other matter of the evening. Someone's always gotta be last, unfortunately. Four sixty-five Water Street, AT&amp;T Administrator Relief to modify an existing wireless communication flagpole.
Brian, I'm, I'm, uh, Mr. Chair, I make a suggestion that we put some of these poor people every now and then to the beginning of the meeting.
A point taken.
I know, I, I always feel bad for these people that we wake up and say, okay, your turn.
So who is here?
Kimberly.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience, have you been with us before?
I have not had the pleasure being with your board before.
Well, welcome, um, we appreciate your patience with us tonight, we, as you can see, are very busy. Um, but we've been getting a lot of these requests for a lot of the different communication facilities around town, so I just. But they often happen late, so we tend to forget names. So, um, if you wouldn't mind, do you have anything that you can share on the screen, just to provide a visual? I don't think this, these typically don't take long to review.
Let me, let me just give you a little background, uh, my name's Kimberly from Centerline Communications. I am the site act representative for AT&amp;T and also ATC, which is American Tower. Um. AT&amp;T is interested in proving, of improving the cell coverage in the area of Water Street. Obviously, the FCC and the towns, um, try to encourage co-location as much as possible. Um, the existing flagpole that is, um, at this location has. Um. Has the accommodations for one more carrier. And, yeah, I'll bring up my. My screen right now for you guys. Can you guys just tell me when you can see it?
Yeah.
We're good.
Um, so like you mentioned, this is a flagpole design. Um, this is the tower itself, doesn't look like much, because it is a concealed tower. Um, AT&amp;T is looking at going in this top bay, which gives them a, a center line or a rad of seventy-two feet. All the antennas and the equipment would be concealed within the flagpole itself. So nothing would change, um, from the appearance of this tower, um, to the community. It would all be hidden inside the existing structure. The height or the look of the tower will not change, all, everything will be done inside. Um, obviously, there is. That is associated with the towers, um, the ground equipment would be placed within the existing fence compound. So there's no changes to the compound itself. Um, from the standpoint of the dimensions, obviously, it would entail placing a walk-in cabinet. Um, on a, um, cement pad feet, and placing the small generator that is used in case of. Oh. Equipment is we are proposing a fence. Um, be added here, just so we have the ability to put the equipment within that fence compound. Right now, the fence is, uh, the door to the fence is way over here, and it's not feasible to bring the equipment and get it back into this corner. So we're just proposing adding, um, a. A swinging door in this portion of the fence itself.
So this is an added pad, it's not inside, it will be in a new compound, not inside the original compound.
It is, um, inside the original fenced area. Um, it'd be right next to it adjacent, so this is the existing equipment for the existing carriers, and we would be abutting. Against it within the existing area, but you're correct, this would be new equipment, obviously, next to the existing equipment. Our lease is approximately ten feet by twenty feet. Um, that we would be leasing within that area. Uh, the application that we submitted is under the. Um, section sixty-four oh nine, the eligible facilities request, I'm not sure if the board is familiar with that. Um, it's.
We are, yep.
You are, okay, perfect.
I don't think anybody's come to us with a new one in five years.
It, it basically encourages the carriers to co-locate as, as, as much as they can. And then encourages the towns to provide a quick and easy access to the building permit if we maintain the existing. Um. Structure, meaning no substantial increases to the structure, in this case, we have none, and no substantial increase to the ground space. So we believe that we have satisfied the requirements of a facilities, eligible facilities request. And we are hoping that the board grants approval, so we can go to building permit and get the, um, AT&amp;T equipment added. And that service provided for those customers. I mean, I don't know if you guys have questions, this one seems really straightforward to me, only because it's a, uh, camouflaged flagpole design. So you're not looking at any visible changes to the community from the tower itself.
Oh, we know it well, I think there's a Christmas tree behind it, but this one's the flagpole up in front. Um, I assume between the two of them, all the major carriers are covered, um. Any other comments, questions, board members?
My only comment, Dave, is I don't, I apologize, but I forgot this was coming up tonight, and I don't have our. Standard letter ready.
I have a copy, I have a copy.
I did, yeah, I did provide it. I did type it up and provide it.
You provided the, the why we can grant the relief. Normally, we have, uh. Yeah, you did a nice job with the, here's why you meet the six of four oh nine requirements. But we even have a better one, which basically allows you to get it signed tonight.
Yeah, no, it's, it's on there, Chip, I think I can probably accommodate that. Um.
I did, I did type it up, uh, Gail gave me the template that you.
Where am I missing it?
I have it in the file, you may not have it, I have it in the file.
I don't think I have it, okay.
You're right.
Yeah, so I did, I did modify it to this particular application and provide Gail a copy of it.
Yep, normally, we have three, so Gail, if we proceed, I would sign this one, and. When you get the file back, then this other copy, well, normally I sign.
Yeah, these days, we don't need three, uh, because everything's scanned and emailed, so, yeah.
One's enough, okay.
Yep.
I know the last couple we did, I think I still was signing three, but okay, if that's sufficient, cuz otherwise I can run them through my copier right here.
No, once for the ZBA file, once for Ben, and then I scan her, um, a copy.
Got it.
Signed.
Okay. Anything else, board members? And do we have any members of the public left? Yeah, we have Bob, he's still on here for some unknown reason, um, cuz he's generally. Bob, do you have any comments or questions for this application? Being the only board, uh, member of the public still left here, I believe. Alright, hearing none.
Oh, no, no, I just couldn't get it out of mute, Dave, sorry about that.
Okay.
Oh, I'd just like to listen to you guys.
Okay. Appreciate the fan club, alright.
The other modifications, and then I stayed on to listen to the telephone company. Don't get an opportunity to do it very much, I'm wide awake. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Bob.
You have a very boring life if you're listening to us.
Alright, alright, let's go, guys.
Yep, I'm trying.
Pass my bedtime.
We'll close it to public testimony, so back to the board, so.
Let me give it a shot, Dave.
Well, I can, I can read something if you wanna then.
If you read it, I'll make, yeah, please.
Okay. And it, just two words for you. So moved.
Absolutely, that I am.
So, the board, uh, the chair would entertain a motion that after review of correspondence, plans and materials provided by AT&amp;T's representative. That we found that the adding of three antennas and six remote radio heads within the existing flagpole. And adding a walk-in cabinet generated to the existing concrete pads within, or on concrete pads within the existing fence compound. In accordance with the plans prepared by N, B and C dated July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. On site number one oh five seven nine nine oh seven and site name S two eight seven seven. Satisfied the standard for an eligible facilities request of an existing wireless tower or base station. In accordance with section six four oh nine of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Act of two thousand and twelve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I've, yes, that is unanimous, I am signing my name to the letter. It'll be in the file. Which Gail will get back tomorrow, and Kimberly will be able to get that from her as soon as we can process it on our end, alright?
Back, do you guys know the process from here, does, uh, does the building permit, um, allow for issue?
You just have to submit the building permit now with the same plans in that letter, well, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
There's no appeal period, no decisions we have to write, so it just, it can proceed right to that next step, as Gail said.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome, and thanks again for your patience. Have a good night. Unless you wanna stay on for a couple more. Alright, board members, any clerk or board comments this evening?
Thought I had something, but I can't remember, so.
I move that, I, I move that we, uh, approve the minutes. And with, with the, with the not as perfectly written as usual. Considering that the pasting was not done properly, the correction of David. The correction of David Hatfield being replaced by Amy Wall in all appropriate positions, Gail.
Yes, yes, I know, I know.
Yeah, I can't read the legal notice and be absent. It's just.
I know, I apologize.
Everyone missed it, but I just, I don't know why I caught my eye today, anyway. So, um, motion to approve as amended, uh, and you'll get us that copy, and those are the ones we'll.
I will.
Second on that, thank you. Any, any discussion? On favor, Chip?
I.
Amy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. I did want to uh, add, is everyone that um, caught up with that state? Uh, conflict of interest training?
So I took it, I took it, but I can't figure out how to send it to anybody.
I had that problem last time.
I think I had to print it out and bring it.
I was gonna say.
So I probably have to take it again, so I can print it, right?
Right.
You shouldn't.
I have a printer. I couldn't change it or do any of that. I was, but I'm useless anyway when it comes to that stuff, so.
Alright, well, when you get to the end screen, call in your tech support. Um, okay, I just want to make sure, we wanted to make sure we're all up to date there. Um, and um, if you hadn't heard about the forum, that's on the twentieth, I certainly encourage. That you consider taking the time to listen. Um, there will probably be some public participation and questions and answers. Um.
And the other thing is, is the master plan committee, if you're at all interested in getting on that, the deadline's the fifteenth. I believe.
Thanks for reminding. I had that on my list somewhere, and I forgot to bring it up, yes.
I at one point thought I would put in for that, and I am not.
I mean, that's what people said. It's twenty years old. We got to get it updated and. It would be good to have some representation from the board. If anyone is genuinely interested, it would be good to have somebody jump in there, but.
Yeah, I need something else to do.
Yeah.
Is is there like a listing to go to define where it is?
Uh, Dave sent it out a couple times. Gail sent it out.
Alright.
Sorry, Dave.
Yeah, check email, also check the town's website.
Town website, yeah.
On the news. Um, I subscribed all that. I don't know if you guys do, would you subscribe, you get news updates. You can tell them what you, what you want to get, but. You get those sort of news flashes. Um, you know, there's openings on boards, you know, that I got recently, some boards, you know, but anyway. Um, alright, any other business tonight, folks?
Well, one question, one question for everybody. I see in the newspaper says last day to register vote for town meeting is November sixth. Is that for new people? Or is it for re-registered?
No, people that aren't registered to vote.
Town meeting is November sixth.
Yeah, but now that's that new thing now. You can regi, everybody can register and up until the day of and mail.
Oh, really?
All that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I think town meeting is the sixth or seventh or sometime that weekend, right?
It it's just confusing as to the way it's written.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion?
Third.
Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you again for your time tonight, folks.